But I come back in and I think the mayor becomes the default host of the meeting while I'm out. So should that happen, I'll be back.
Okay.
And we are on air.
All right. I call the 2,318th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted by video conference. The public has been invited to watch the meeting on the city's YouTube channel, Comcast Show on 30 and City Limits, or by logging into video conference as an attendee. The public may submit comments and writing by email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. There will be opportunities for the public to give oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comment, staff will monitor the email inbox, the Zoom participant window and the Zoom chat to see if anyone would like to speak. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. If members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference or from chambers. We're not in chambers anymore. So not there. If that fails to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue council briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Today's agenda features a new order with the same topics, but announcements are now permanently at the top of the meeting and community comments earlier. All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Milwaukee acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cuyahpia, et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. That mindset, we are also making sure that the indigenous history is included in our comprehensive plan with the work that we're doing tonight. So our announcements. Free grab and go lunch socks are being provided by the North Clackamas Schools Meal Program, Meals Program with activity bags from the Letting Library. Anyone age eight, zero to 18 can grab a bag every Thursday from now until August 20th outside the library. On July 20th, the city began accepting applications for a second round of small business grants to help with the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The applications are due Friday, July 24th at 5:00 p.m. For the application or to learn more, visit the city's homepage. The City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee will hold its first meeting on Wednesday, July 29th at 6:00 p.m. online using Zoom. The committee will help decide how the current City Hall site should be used once the city moves to a newer building. Check the city calendar to learn more and for the Zoom link. Would you like to know what city planning is? What a city planner does? Or how things get planned and built? What you could do with your property? And how to even start to find out? If so, join the City Planning 101 virtual class on Wednesday, July 29th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The session is intended to be interactive, so please come ready with questions and an eagerness to learn. All ages and education levels are welcome to participate. The class will be held online using Zoom webinar. Check the city calendar for information about how to join the webinar. Letting Library presents the Zanyak from Monday, August 3rd through Saturday, August 15th. The Zanyak shares his comedy secrets with kids in a series of short videos teaching balancing, beatboxing, juggling, psych gags and dancing and dance moves. Watch the video for free on the library's YouTube channel or Facebook page. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. And now I believe Scott has an announcement for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A very brief reminder to everyone watching that 2020 is an election year, if that had escaped you. And there are two positions on the city council that are open or will be up on the ballot, November 3rd ballot, positions one and three. The city's filing window for any interested candidates opens at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, July 27th, which is next Monday. Typically, that process begins with a brief and happy chat with me, the city elections officer, usually here at City Hall. However, because City Hall is closed due to the pandemic, I'm asking anybody interested in running for office to please contact me and we'll set up a phone or a video conference to do that discussion in person, not in person, to not do it in person, to do over the video or the phone. And then paperwork can be dropped off through the Dropbox at City Hall and we'll go through those details. So my main point this afternoon is to remind people, the election window opens July 27th. It runs through August 25th. And any interested candidates or potential candidates, please contact me. You can contact me at ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov or call me at 503-786-7502. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Scott. Special, we have no proclamations or awards. We have special reports, the extension of the COVID-19 emergency declaration. This is to be presented by Ann Ober, but I think we all know what's going on here. Go for it, Ann. You're muted.
But it's also different. I'm kidding, it's not different. Nothing new. We're still in an emergency. Councillor Beatty did ask whether or not we could extend this for a longer period of time. We're looking at that. Justin is considering it under our emergency plan. And I should know something before we have our next renewal. But I think everyone is planning that at minimum we're going to be in an emergency situation through January.
Undoubtedly. All right, so I would entertain a motion.
What's the actual correct date? Because it's an incorrect date on our agenda. So it's August 4th or something like that? Is that what it is, Scott, the 4th?
August 4th is the correct next day, yep.
Okay, so I would move to extend the emergency declaration related to COVID-19 through August 4th, 2020.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the emergency declaration related to COVID-19 through August 4th, 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unheard, it passes unanimously. Right, Scott, is there anybody on to provide community comment?
I see two attendees in the audience and I don't see any hands raised. I don't see any chat on it. And I'm looking in the OCR inbox now and there is no indication. I don't see anybody interested in speaking.
All righty, then I will not read this part. So to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 20th, 2020 work session, the June, sorry, June 2nd, 2020 work session, June 2nd, 2020 regular session and the June 9th, 2020 special session. We have a resolution correcting the current term end dates of the Arts Committee, position one. We have a resolution authorizing a contract with settler supply for $565,644 for the wellhouse construction phase of well number two project and accepting an additive alternative, alternate. A resolution acting as the local contract review board approving a contract with Ratchi Inc. for the 22nd Avenue and River Road Safe Project. We have a resolution adopting a 2020 work plan for Albrecht Island. We have an Oregon Liquor Control Commission application for Ovation Bistro at 2037 Southeast Jefferson Street, full on premises commercial. Does any member of council wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do not wish to remove any item from the consent agenda, but I did want to note two small corrections that I identified and I discussed with the recorder earlier today. One is on page RS14. There's a reference to testimony from a Mr. Conti who came before us and it's characterized in the minutes as testimony about wanting rezoning of his home, but it's actually, I believe, commercial property he owns on Monroe Street. So I think that's a very minor change. And the other one I'm going to defer to you on, on page RS10, the reference to having studied.
My comment, yes. I think your version of that is more accurate. Did, Scott, did you receive that?
I didn't, I can pull it up and read into the record. Bear with me just a minute. Okay, so so the revision, oops, that Councillor Beatty noted is to a reference in the minutes of the June 2nd regular session, there's a passage where the mayor, it says in the packet now, Mayor Gamba found no instances of racially motivated violence on the part of MPD officers in the last 15 years. Councillor Beatty proposed, that it should read, Mayor Gamba stated he was aware of no instances of racially motivated violence on the part of the MPD, of MPD officers in the last 15 years.
Yeah, I think that's a little more, a little more accurate. Yours was fine, but that's a little more accurate. All right, so other than those changes, anybody have anything else they want to change? So I would entertain a motion.
So I'll move to approve the consent agenda with those two changes just discussed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the two revisions as recently discussed.
I apologize, who seconded, just sorry. Falconer, thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unheard, it passes unanimously. Okay, business items. Authorization of a contract for banking services, a resolution. This will be presented by our Finance Director, Bonnie Dennis, and Accounting and Contract Specialist, Kelly Tucker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. So tonight I am presenting that the city staff performed a formal bid process to request proposals for banking services. The city received proposals which were from Wells Fargo, which is the city's current bank, as well as Bank of the West and Umpqua Bank. Out of the three solicitations, there was a review panel which included the city manager, the finance staff, Public Works Director and Sustainability Coordinator. The review consisted of key elements including the experience, approach, corporate responsibility, pricing and interviews. Ultimately, the Umpqua Bank was chosen to proceed as the bank that was the most qualified to provide services to the city. And the contract authorization is before you for consideration. Are there any questions?
No. Well, I want to make it apparent, if it's not to people watching, that this process was begun with an interest towards divestment from a Wall Street bank that supports the fossil fuel industry. And as with many things, that when you solve problems relating to climate, you are also solving other problems. So we are now getting to work with a bank that is local rather than a Wall Street bank and we are getting to save money. And I think this is a win-win-win for the city and I think other cities should take note of the fact that they can work with a local bank and save themselves some money and stop investing in banks doing things that are harmful. Any further discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution acting as the local contract review board, authorizing execution of a contract with Umpqua Bank for general banking services.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution acting for local contract review board, authorizing execution of a contract with Umpqua Bank for general banking services. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unheard, it passes unanimously. Excellent.
Yep.
When, when will that changeover take place?
Well, now that we're starting with the contract, we will start working with Umpqua Bank to make the transition. It will take some time to make such a big transition. So we are hoping to be fully integrated by the end of October.
Excellent, thank you. All right, our next item is the initiation of a street vacation on Harlow Road. And this will be presented by our Associate Planner, Brett Kellner.
Hi there, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Good to see you virtually, as always. I'm Brett Kellner, Associate Planner with the City of Milwaukee. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to walk you through something that we hadn't, I hadn't done very much before in the past year and this is our second time in the last three months, I think, doing a little street vacation. So it's fairly fresh for me and hopefully it's, even though you have a lot higher volume of things you're working on, hopefully it's a little bit fresh for you too. I'm also going to ask Kelly Brooks and I think Heather, and I'm not going to say the last name, is it Koch, Koch, Koch? Koch from NCPRD to pipe in if they have any, any information to, to share on this. So let me just share my screen. I've got a PowerPoint here that I can walk you through real quickly. Okay, all right. So the proposal is to initiate this evening the vacation of right of way that is known as Harlow Road. It is within the Milwaukee Bay Park area and I've highlighted that area in yellow here. Interestingly, it's not a portion of what we understand to be the Jefferson Street right of way, even though it's just kind of across McLaughlin Boulevard for that. I don't know the entire history, history of it, but it is referred to, I think, as County Road, number 218 or Harlow Road. The, it is, you know, obviously not developed as a street right of way right now. This is looking kind of towards the river of, from, from Jefferson Street across McLaughlin Boulevard. It is fully functionally part of Milwaukee Bay Park and will remain that way. Here's a little bit of a closer shot looking down into, to the park area. The reason for this request, as I understand, this is where I'd invite Kelly or Heather to jump in if they'd like to add more, is as, as part of moving forward into one of the final phases of the full park redevelopment, the funding that's involved, it's very important that there not be kind of any chance that something identified as public right of way could potentially be redeveloped at some point in the future as a street. So part of the funding condition is to vacate the right of way. So we have kind of an integrated, you know, full park property here. And as with the other street vacation that we did a few months ago, what will happen is, let me just back up a little bit. So whoops. The, the city is the owner of the, the propping or the rest of the quote, real property of the park on either side to the north and south of the right of way. So when we vacate this right of way, the city will become the actual owner of that property and it'll be integrated into the tax lots that make up the park on, on either side. The remaining right of way here will be, it will remain ODOT, ODOT's right of way for Highway 990 or McLaughlin. So what, what we're asking for you to do tonight is to just begin the initiation process for the vacation. What, what we'll do after you, you hopefully approve that resolution, we'll send the required notice to the property owners. And in this case, part of our required notification area goes out into the river. I don't think we have addresses for any of the fishes or wildlife that live out there. So mostly we'll be, you know, sending that public notice to folks who are property owners on the east side of McLaughlin in kind of our downtown area. And then we've already scheduled some time with you on August 18th to come back and do kind of the, the final authorization of the vacation, assuming that we won't have objections from a majority of the owners who are in that notice. a majority of the owners who are in that notice area. And with that, I know I ran right by the opportunity for either Kelly or Heather to say anymore about kind of the importance of this vacation. I'll ask if either of you guys want to chip in and say anything else.
I can jump in. I mean, Brett, you covered it really well, which is just essentially, this is not right-of-way that we had ever intend to use as a road, and it's a condition of the funding that Heather worked so hard to get with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So just kind of coming in and trying to get this cleaned up to provide them with the certainty they need to make the award.
All right, great. Thank you. So with that, I'll ask if you have any questions?
I have some questions. So I just want to be, I just want to make sure I'm sort of understanding. Usually, the other right-of-way vacations that we've done, we've actually transferred property to another owner, and it doesn't look like this is the case here. We're just specifying that this property will not be developed into a road or any other incompatible uses for the park. We're not actually giving this land to anyone.
I guess it would be fair to say we're giving it to the city. I mean, it's, in this case, because there are no other, you know, private property owners on either side of the right-of-way, it will kind of revert to the city's ownership. And I think technically, some of these tax lot boundaries will extend kind of half and half into the middle of what was previously right-of-way. So it will, it will no longer be reflected as right-of-way. It will, it will be reflected now as, those tax lots on either side will be a little bit larger. So it's kind of yes and no. We are in fact transferring this, what will be formerly right-of-way, to, I guess, the city's ownership because the city is the owner of the properties involved.
Okay. And then also, just because of the lines on the, on the map that you've displayed here in a couple of different places, I just want to make, so it looks like there's a couple of, there's, are there some other issues that we might need to deal with? I mean, it looks like just to the north of the, of the, of the tax lot, or is there an adjacent tax lot above that? I mean, is this the only right-of-way? Is this the only issue? Are there just various tax lots that make up the park?
Yeah, I guess Kelly could maybe confirm this, and none of the maps I have in the presentation tonight show the actual, all the different tax lots. It's actually quite a, there, I think this doesn't quite show all the detail. There are several different tax lots that come down to touch the boundaries of the right-of-way on either side. But this vacation of right-of-way will only really affect the actual tax lot boundaries of those tax lots that are just adjacent on either side of the current right-of-way. So some of these tax lot boundaries farther to the north, they won't be affected directly by, by the right-of-way. It's a larger question, I guess, for Kelly or others, if in the future at some point, if the city would like to go through a process of actually consolidating all of those tax lots and just make it one big, you know, one big tax lot, one big real property that's the park. I don't, I don't know if that's a high priority right now, or if that's something that there's any interest in doing.
I'll let Heather jump in if I get this wrong, but my understanding is that the, there are, the only remaining issue with respect to right-of-way that needs to be re-designated actually involves ODOT. So this is the last of the city right-of-way. Additional consolidation between the tax lots doesn't seem to be needed at this point. It's the ones that are just the wrong designation that's the priority for now. So we do have some additional work, but that involves working with ODOT, and so we're going through that now. And Heather, if you want to add anything to that, feel free.
No, I think you, you, you got it. I guess the only thing I would emphasize is that, you know, if it was something like a linear right-of-way along the edge of the road, sort of like ODOT's right-of-way, we could sort of work around it, but because this essentially bisects that remaining sort of green space, that's why it's so important to have it become part of the contiguous park. So, you know, it functions that way today, and it's zoned open spaces, I understand it, so it's, it makes the, it makes the ownership, I think, pretty consistent with what's going on around it. And there's, I think, 15 city parcels all in all, but I think maybe just four or five that actually touched this right-of-way.
Okay. And then Kelly, just to, just to, just to make sure, kind of, you know, looking forward on the ODOT right-of-way issue, do you, do you imagine that that's going to be a vacation to, would that be a property transfer to the city of Milwaukee?
That's the discussion.
Okay.
So, and it isn't as, so it's not as, my understanding with Heather, it is more complex, but it's not as mission critical as this one. But that is honestly the conversation. So it's needed for the trolley trail alignment, even where it is today. And so that's the conversation right now, saying, hey, which way is this, what is the real use of this going to be, and is it coming to the city? I can't imagine it's not coming to us, but that's what we have to talk through.
Okay, thank you.
It is, I'm looking at the map, and I'm seeing these long, either tax lots, or it's the trolley trails right-of-way that, parallel 99. Does the trolley trail have its own right-of-way? Anybody know?
I think, what was interesting to me is that within kind of this immediate notice area, at least the section that's labeled as the trolley trail, my memory is that looking at our maps for this, this section here, it actually seemed like that portion of it was in city ownership, and that there's some NCPRD ownership of the trolley trail starting a little farther to the south. Heather, does that ring true?
Yeah, it was old right-of-way, and then the city, at some point, it was deeded over to the city, and except for south of the, south of this Harlow Road right-of-way, there is a, a small skinny piece that slowly widens, just like his cursor shows, to capture the trolley trail, so that NCPRD owns that piece. So there's a, there's a weird shape for that, what happens there. I'm actually trying to sort that out right now with cartographers and others, but essentially that property, the trolley trail lies within city property, ODOT right-of-way, and NCPRD property, just in Milwaukee Bay Park.
Cool.
Maybe not a high priority, but it does seem to need some clarification and clear.
Yeah, we're, we're working closely with ODOT on that, thanks to Kelly's help as well, so we're hopefully going to be getting some clarity on that quite soon.
Nice.
Any other questions? I have a question for Heather. Heather, can you tell me how to say your last name correctly?
It's Koch, like a cook in the kitchen.
Cook, okay, sorry. Sorry about that, thank you.
No worries.
All right, well, if there are no other questions, I'll stop sharing this screen and let you guys get to any deliberation or discussion.
Hi, is there any discussion?
Makes very good sense to me.
Yeah, it seems a no-brainer.
Yeah, are you, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay, I'll go ahead with that. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city-initiated vacation of the public street right-of-way within Milwaukee Bay Park designated as Harlow Road.
Second.
Or Angel.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the city-initiated vacation of the public right-of-way within the Milwaukee Bay Park designated as Harlow Road. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unheard, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll see you again in mid-August for part two.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Heather. And Kelly.
You're welcome, thank you.
All righty, so we're at the main event. Comprehensive Plan Update Ordinance continued from June 30. The continuing public hearing on the updated comprehensive plan is called order. The purpose of this hearing is to continue to deliberate on the updated comprehensive plan. Does any member of, does any council member wish to announce a conflict of interest? Seeing none, nor do I. Does any council, well, in that case, and Denny, you're up.
That was quick. Hello, Denny Egner with the Planning Department, Planning Director. Last time council met on this, June 30, the council worked up through, up to and began to enter into some discussion on Section 7, Chapter 7, Housing. And that's where we will, again, begin today, I believe, and work through the rest of the document, hopefully, and then return to some of the outstanding issues that had been left, some of the background pieces. The, in your packet this time, we did not update the matrix. The matrix is the same matrix we've been using before, so I would, again, recommend using that matrix to work forward. But the other, there were a couple of other things in the packet. Mary redid the, the plan and highlighted the changes that she'd made based on the comments so far. So there were highlighted elements throughout the plan that kind of depicted where those changes were made. Also in the packet was a draft annexation map. This was a request of Councillor Beatty to include an annexation map. And, you know, when looking at it, there, there really, it's surprising how little change there's been since 1960. And it was easy to get this one. Going back and trying to piece it more together would be a more difficult map to do. So I think the question for you is whether or not you want to include it. We had done some edits to the Milwaukee History section, and so that's, again, something to look at, and Council President Faulkner provided an article today about capitalization issues, so, you know, that's something that you might want to discuss later. And finally, there was a question about the Greenway policy and whether we could automatically designate the park plans as Greenway Design Plans. And what I discovered in my research is that there's actually specific notifications that need to happen to make that occur. So I'm recommending that we just do that at the time of comp plan implementation for the new Greenway work. So that'd be the second round of implementation work after we're done with housing. So those were the updates. That was all I've got for you. If you have any questions about any of the materials, I'd be happy to answer them. Mary is on as well, so she could answer any specifics about some of the highlighted changes that were made. And other than that, I urge you to continue deliberation.
My thought is have Mary walk us through all the changes, just so that everybody's clear and we're all in agreement that that's set and done, and then start on the matrix again at, at seven, at, at Chapter 7? Or do you not want to do that? Are we all good with the changes? Because I know Lisa had a pushback on the, on the History section. You're muted.
So yeah, I definitely have some thoughts and some pushback on the History section, but that's a bigger discussion, and I think, I think we should go through the chapters As for reading all of the, having Mary go through all the changes, that seems a little, I don't know. I mean, that, you know, some of them are grammatical and little things, and I think that's something for us to do before the final adoption, but I don't know that that's a great thing to spend time doing today.
I made notes where I felt like we maybe missed a couple of things, and so maybe if people have, have those things, those are, I think, good to go through tonight so that we can make sure that we're on the same page where we have disagreement. Do, does everybody think that's maybe a, a good approach for that? And then like Lisa, like Councillor Beatty said, we can sort of go through and really nitpick at the very end if, you know, there's some.
I wasn't talking about the little tiny grammatical things. I was just talking, I was talking about any, you know, the substantive things, like the history and photographs, things like that.
If I might point one other thing out about the highlights. What we would hope to do between tonight and the next meeting is to continue on through that document, so we've got all the highlighted changes. So let's have the meeting on the 4th of August. You would have the opportunity to fine-tune or tweak any last-minute changes. That was the thinking I had. And then we could have a, a final, final version on the 18th.
Yeah, and I was planning to get a printed copy of the next draft and then be able to sit down with my notes and, you know, see what do side by side, just, yeah, that I'm not prepared to do really today.
Okay, all right, fine. Then we can go straight to Chapter 7. Does that work for everybody?
Or do what the Council President suggested and go back and pick up specific things that she's noted, that I'm fine, I'm not objecting to that.
I only had a couple of things, and I don't think that I go back very far. There weren't very many in my notes.
All right, let's do those.
Sorry, I had to transfer my notes from my old doc to my new doc, so I apologize for...
And while you're doing that, I might, I might mention that the other thing that we need to talk about is, and maybe you're going there, Council President Faulkner also provided some land use descriptions, so when we get to that, we need to look at each other and decide how to, how to, what you want to go with.
That was one of the ones that I was interested in, yeah.
So on page RS 422 of our, of our new, so tonight's packet, Mary and Denny, thank you for going through. You changed single-family and multifamily throughout the document, except for on the graphic. It still says single-family instead of dwelling and multifamily. I think that might be it looking backwards. I think everything else is sort of new, and we haven't gotten to Housing Policy 7 yet.
So what about the proposed changes to information with zoning maps? Do we want to do that now, or do we want to wait and do that next week, or next meeting?
I think that's bigger. I think we should definitely try to get to that tonight.
Okay, should we do that now?
Sure.
All right.
RS 349.
349?
349 on the, on the new version of today's packet, yeah.
Thanks, Denny.
And I, what I don't have in front of me, though, is the material that Council President Faulkner provided, but I understood that Scott had given an exhibit number, sent it out. Maybe, I don't know if he did send it out or not, but...
I'll send it right now to you again, Denny.
Is that, oh no, that's, I'm sorry, that's the History chapter one.
Does everybody have it, or do we need it? Does everyone need it?
Need what? I'm sorry, I'm trying to find that document, so, I mean, I'm trying to find that page, so...
Just easy to do.
Council President Faulkner sent two, an email, two emails in the last 24 hours that were captured and put into the packet as exhibits, and they had been emailed to all council.
Yeah, the designations actually was sent last week. It was on the 17th.
Right, but they were all, all council emails, though.
Right.
Yeah, I've got that, the one that Angel put together, yeah, I've got that, right here.
Okay.
But meanwhile, we're looking for page in the, in the RS documents.
349.
349. Just takes so long to try to find anything. Just takes so long to try to find anything. Okay, I'm there.
So my thinking here was to capture some of our conversation that we had last time about framing this in, you know, in a historical context. Because I think that there was a lot of confusion among people who were providing testimony that, you know, the, you know, that this was, that this carryover was a reflection of how we expected these lists and maps to, you know, to persist in light of our, the policies that we have drafted. And I don't think that that was the intention. And so I was trying to draft something that captured that and also captured, you know, and I just sort of took some liberty here with what we, you know, what we might do, what we would, how we would designate, you know, the whys behind the designations. You know, rather than just simply looking at the past and saying, here's what they are. Here's, you know, here are the specific density requirements that are in these particular zones. You know, sort of provide some explanations for why a particular area would receive a specific designation. And so, you know, I looked to other examples for, you know, for descriptions about, you know, why you include something in your, you know, very low density residential. It's because, and then I provided, and you can read, you can read the, the sort of the.
And where did you get those from?
Those are taken actually from, with my, with modification. I took those from Portland's land use designations for the, for the similar size, for the similar zoning.
So I, I'm fine with the changes that are in the document that's before us. I don't like the idea, and this is one of my concerns about the history chapter two. I think we're doing a little bit too much conjecture about things we don't know in terms of how they evolved or what happened. So I guess I'm not inclined to add those things. But I'm fine with the prefatory, the stuff in red here on 349. And I was fine with some of your other language, but I mean, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think it's disputed that 70% of our residential areas are dominated by the most exclusionary zoning that there is. And that these, that these designations have had the effect of restricting growth in the city. I'm not sure that there's, you know, I mean, those are the facts. It's 74% zoned, single dwelling units, and that absolutely restricts growth in the city.
Well, I'm okay with that too. What, but what I'm not okay with is the, it's R1B was, low density was this reason because? Because we don't have that history from Milwaukee.
Wait, that doesn't say that. Existing land use, I mean, do you have the word document that I said, that I sent?
I don't have it up, no.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
So Angel, are you, I'm, I'm just slightly confused, so help me out here. Appreciate. In this document, are you trying to say, here's what currently exists and we believe this may be the reason for that? It's not saying this is how it's going to be in the future, right? It's saying, here's, here's the way it is right now and why?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that we should rewrite these to reflect how, how we would, how we should designate them going forward.
So R10 should be areas far from the city that don't have in public investments, like where I live?
Yes, yes. I mean, you know, the low, the very lowest density is what I'm saying. The very lowest, the land use designations, there should be a reasoning behind that. And it should, it should correlate, it should reflect the availability of services and infrastructure that might require a low, you know, low density designation. So what other reasoning, I mean, I guess this is, I mean, this is, this is where we need to have a meaty conversation about policy.
Yeah.
Are we givings, why? What is, what's the policy decision behind these designations? Why is your yard zoned R10 or whatever it is? Just because it always has been or has been since a specific, you know, since a specific.
Well, that's probably the case. That's how it always has been, but.
Well, it hasn't always been.
As I read these, I thought, well, R7 and R10, which is a lot of my neighborhood, it would never occur to me that it was designated that because there weren't services available. And.
I guess I also.
There were constraints like that. I mean, I've got to look at it differently, I understand that, but I'm just trying to wrap my brain around that.
So I guess I have two responses. One is I think there's, like, looking at your first paragraph about existing land use designations and looking also at the way the staff has done it. And based on the conversation we had last time, I thought we wanted to frame this document as this is the historical and the existing. And so I think your first paragraph is fine, that goes into that. But then saying what they should be is, is what the, I mean, we've, we've delayed the mapping to another phase. And we haven't had, put this out there for public comment. And we haven't, I mean, even the planning commission hasn't discussed these. It seems to me it should be, this is what's existing and the policy of what, what we might designate in the future is part of the next phase.
But I think we need. Well, so then I guess then C, so look, okay, so looking back at, on the, you know, what's existing now under low density residential. We do a little bit of sites with natural resource and that. We do start to talk about like the, the future of the, you know, the policies that are in this document and what that might mean for the future. And so, you know, I was hoping that we might be able to do a little bit of both. Both what we talked about last time in terms of framing this and, you know, this of existing, existing lists and maps and also better match this section with the proposed policies that are in chapter seven. Because the proposed policies that we have before us that have been vetted through this whole process and the planning commission don't look like these A, B, and C. Certainly not A. So, you know, my formatting in my Word document isn't perfect and doesn't line up great with what we discussed. But that's, that's my thinking. That's why I put it together, was because it was just easier than trying to put these into a PDF, a static document like this.
Yeah, I just think there's, A, there's a potential for confusion because we've, you know, we're calling this existing and then we're going to start talking about what's the future plan? And B, we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't discussed that, we haven't put that out there for public. We haven't framed the, you know, the public comment around that and around those designations.
Sure. No, I, I agree with that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think, I, me too. So just really doing a good job of saying that this is what currently exists.
Yeah, I think integrating the proposed language chap, the proposed first paragraph from the Council President's document into the first two paragraphs on page RS 349 makes perfect sense to me. But I'm not sure I would change much else below that.
So I do appreciate that, that there is some differentiation in Council President Faulkner's language between R10 and R7. It's always bothered me that those are just sort of lumped together in this one place because it covers so much of the area of our city. And, and there's really no delineation of what the, what those are and why other than one is smaller than the other. So if we could think a little bit about, is there a way that we could include some language? You know, like a letter D, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't do enough thinking about this in advance to have a language proposal here, but could we put in a D that, that speaks to why these two things are, are different designations at the present time?
I don't know that we know that. I think a lot of that.
I think that's the point.
And at the time, I don't think there was any real thought process around it other than this developer who did this lot wanted to do bigger lots.
Yeah. Well, maybe we say something to that effect then, we, you know. No, really, just that, that the reason, and again, I don't have the language, but R10 and R7, to, to our knowledge, are not substantially different for, for particular reasons related to planning or code.
Or for personal reasons of wanting larger spaces.
Right.
I mean, we can, I mean, we wouldn't say it that way, but that's what you're trying to get at, right?
Right, but it seems kind of arbitrary or it's related to, this is property that was annexed in from the county and the county has its own way of doing things and its own policies. You know, you see where I'm coming from?
Again, don't want us to be conjecturing on things that we can't substantiate. We have history and we have old comp plan ordinances that answer that question, great, let's cite them.
The plan language that's in the plan here is describing the planned districts and not necessarily the zones. So that's one thing to think about here. The planned district, the low density planned district includes R10 and R7. The moderate density district includes only R5. I mean, one of the questions that I have when you get to implementation, do you really need four residential plan districts? Now, I mean, I think there's a way to collapse some of these and simplify it.
Yeah.
That's a later question.
Yeah, and I guess that's part of why it's bothering me is because you have brought this up and it made a lot of sense to me that, that there's just some complexity in here that, that doesn't necessarily make sense. And I understand that this is supposed to represent current day understanding. And I don't have a problem with that. It just feels like there's something important that we're not saying here. And I don't know, maybe I just, maybe I'll think about it over dinner and see if I can come up with something that seems like it, it might speak to that somehow for a letter D.
I mean, I guess to me, the, the picture tells you, you know, how much, it's a lot. And maybe we can quantify it and say, you know, R7, R10 is, you know, 40% or whatever it is. And, you know, R5 is only, you know, that's kind of where you're wanting to go? I mean, that seems to be an easy thing to add. Well, I don't know, I don't know how easy those calculations are doing for a map. I shouldn't say that, but easier than the why. Because I don't know that, I mean, that'd be a lot of historical research into our code as to the why. To me, the difference between R7 and R10 makes, you know.
I like the suggestion to include some quantification if it's, if it's not crazy difficult to do. I'm guessing that it's probably within Mary's reach. She's being very quiet and not being muted, so I may be wrong.
You're, you're not muted, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, I could probably work with Nick about that.
Okay, thanks.
What do you think, Angel, that we include the first paragraph, which I do agree? I think that's an excellent sort of explanation of all of that. We add a bit of ratio comparison of how much of the city is X and how much of the city is Y. And otherwise, more or less leave it as is, as, as staff has written it?
Yeah, I suppose, yeah, I, I think with that clear, you know, with, with that clarification of that new, of the new paragraph, I think that that would, would put the, those maps and lists into a better context.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okeydoke. Anything else on this? All right. Do we want to do the history now or do we want to do that later?
Let's do that at the end.
We're really tired.
Really? At nine o'clock at night? Well, I'm hopeful that, I mean, seven and eight are going to take us time, but then the rest of the chapters should not be taking us a lot of time.
Yeah, even in seven and eight, I have, you know, I, my changes are, I think, fairly non-controversial. So, you know, there might be a couple of words that we might finesse, but.
All right, well then, in that case, let's go to the matrix and chapter seven on that.
Can you, somebody tell me where chapter seven begins in the new packet?
I think it's 422.
Are we going to start with the matrix? So we went the matrix and the packet up? I mean, we want to see them both?
Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, I mean, I've got the matrix printed out, but not the 500 and some page packet, so.
Yeah, I have the matrix, but I think, I think there was a more, I have the matrix that staff printed for us, but I think there was a more recent, so I'm not sure I have everything.
No, I think they said they left the matrix the way it was.
Since the last meeting, but I think there was an update between the printed version and the last meeting.
Yeah.
There were a few minor, few minor changes between the earliest version and the one on the 30th. But they, I think it was mostly council, council member comments that got added at that point. And the, the other comment was about the railroad tracks.
All right.
Okay, so. First thing that I'm seeing is Lashbrook's. I'm going to have to figure out how to have two of these up.
So which Lashbrook comment are you on?
Sorry.
The first, the.
Section seven housing says, I believe that the new plan should clearly state that the housing projections of the housing need analysis are minimalistic and the community is committed to accommodating substantially more growth than the HNA anticipated.
Does anyone have any idea where, like, what page that might? Does anyone have any idea where, like, what page that might...
Relate to, that's what I...
Relate to? I mean, I do remember when, you know, the HNA was done. It was obviously, you know, quite a few years ago now, and it wasn't, you know, it was pre-vision, it was pre-comp plan update, it was... So it definitely was sort of just carrying forward the current comp plan and zoning.
It does, it is a reflection of the current zoning and the current plan capacity. The HNA has forecasts of growth that are based on metro forecasts for their transportation analysis zones. They, we have believed all along that they're low, but they're, we don't have any other mechanism to adjust them upwards. What we did this spring is we asked our consultants who were working on the comp plan to go back into the HNA and make a few tweaks to it to try to give us an alternative forecast. It doesn't do much, it goes up a little bit. That material is going to be distributed again to the CPIC as we go forward, because we will actually need to adopt the HNA as a new background document when we make the land use changes, when we make those, the zone changes and the plan map changes.
So we're not adopting the HNA with this?
We made, as we went through this, we thought that that was a, it was awkward to bring, to adopt that based on the policies right now. I think it is going to be better to do it with the map changes rather than the policy changes.
And I think, you know, rulemaking is going to probably put some additional requirements on our HNA that aren't, that don't currently exist in the, you know, in the current iteration. So we're going to be looking at expanded data sets, and there'll be other, you know, new requirements in putting together our HNA.
The HNA, today's HNA basically argues that we've got plenty of land for our housing needs for the next 20 years.
I have a question for Councilor Parks and probably for Denny as well. I'm just blanking on what the county did when they did their HNA analysis in 2019, I believe it was, that they completed that study. How did they handle Milwaukee? Did they just kind of sweep in what we'd done?
Yeah, did they just curb this out?
Okay. I mean, there might be some sort of extrapolation we could do, but it's not, it's not...
Yeah. There were three or four cities that already had done their own housing needs analysis, and so they just kind of said, "Yeah, well, here's everything together." Right? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they ever sent staff an updated version of their drafts, so...
I don't, I haven't seen it. I don't recall it at C4, the final one. And that's where it originated from, is C4.
I thought we did see a final. I'll look, and if I find something, I'll send it to you both.
Okay.
If I might, just about Stefan's comment about referencing the HNA, I think I'd recommend just holding off on that, given that through the CPIC process and the mapping process, you're going to be dealing with an updated HNA. And I just don't, I don't think you need to make the statement right now. I totally agree with what he's saying there, but I don't know how you say it unless it was part of a background, something in the background document, and it... I'll tell, I'll say one other bias here. One thing we did when we were writing the policies is we tried to make them policies that would be lasting policies and not one-off policies, where you say, you know, "Update the HNA." So we updated the HNA, then what? Then it's an old policy. So we used language throughout that was more to the effect of maintain an updated HNA or something like that, you know, something where the language was such that it would never feel old, because it's, if it's giving us direction, it's giving us direction to keep something current or to maintain a certain policy to engage the community or whatever it might be. I can't say that every policy was written like that, but a lot of them, we tried to keep that theme through them. So in this particular case, a policy written around the HNA to say that the current HNA is too low and the forecasts are too low, that's, again, a point in time kind of reflection. So I think that you might be better to hold off on it, or if you wanted to make some kind of note, it would just be in the background section.
I think you're right, Denny, but that's why I was trying to find the place that he might be referencing, because, I mean, his point is well taken, and it's something I actually brought up when we were doing the HNA, that we were basing those numbers on metro projections that were clearly out of date and...
He's assuming we were adopting the HNA right now with that statement.
He is?
Well, I'm thinking he was, yeah. I mean, we internally, we had a big discussion about whether to roll the HNA into this or to delay the HNA. We need to adopt the HNA, but where we need to do it is with the quick amendments, not necessarily with the policies.
I realize this might be a little unorthodox, but he is watching.
There's actually a mention of the HNA in Milwaukee's Future in the introduction section, so we as staff may have just accidentally put it in the wrong area on the matrix.
You know what? This is a big process. We have a question about a specific comment. If the commenter is available to ask that question of, I am good with, I don't know if I officially have to open public testimony or if we can just ask him.
That says yes, you do.
All right, Denny, would there need to be a motion to reopen the public testimony?
I think you can reopen the public testimony for one person like that, a limited comment.
Does the mayor just gather that in, though, or do they need a motion?
I, that I'm not sure, that's more of a question for our city attorney. I run a little looser with my process, so...
I would be happy to make a motion, just to cover all the bases, if that would be helpful.
It wouldn't hurt, overkill, if nothing else, I suppose.
We are doing a lot of guesswork, just trying to figure out where to put this, where this comment is supposed to be. So, I mean, if it's a limited purpose question, I don't know.
Yeah. I, quite frankly, have never faced reopening the public record under these circumstances, so I don't have a direct answer for you, but to cover all the bases, I think we should just go ahead and have a motion reopen it for the purposes of hearing clarifying information from the commenter, and we'll move on from there.
Okay, I make a motion that we reopen public comment, or public testimony for the purposes of clarifying information from one specific commenter.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to open public comments to get clarifying answers from a particular commenter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none heard. Public comment is open. Now, watch, Lashbrook won't have any idea why he wrote that down.
Not even there, he just logged in to look pretty.
He's just been promoted to the panel, so Stefan, if you can hear us, you should be able to unmute, and if you choose to unvide it, it's very serious.
Thank you. No, I can almost remember, Mr. Mayor. So I did envision it as one of the, I can't remember, and I don't have the document in front of me, whether it was, I think it was in a background or introductory section, where there was text about the HNA. And my concern was that, especially for those of us working on implementation steps, people will point to that and say, "Oh, no, we shouldn't be increasing housing densities here, we shouldn't, we don't have no need for cottage clusters or changing any zoning anywhere to allow more housing, because it says right here, we've already met anything we'd be required to do." So that was my fear. And I did just see it as a background statement that could be included.
So there's two ways we can handle that. Either we could add a background statement, or we could delete the HNA, full stop.
I mean, an HNA is a pretty, I mean, we're getting into deliberation, so maybe we need to close public comment again. But, yeah, an HNA is, I mean, I think we may want to have language in this Milwaukee future about the HNA being revisited or, you know?
Well, and I think your point is good, why don't we close? And thank Stefan for being willing to plop on. I appreciate that you were here.
Let us know about that.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem, thank you.
Stefan, I'm going to put you back in the audience now.
Okay.
Not personal.
Yeah.
I'll move to close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
I'll second.
Does that work?
Then moved and seconded to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none heard, public testimony is closed.
There is a reference to the HNA on the second page of the housing section in the background.
So it's... I was just going to say that, Denny.
Yeah, RS 419 or 104 of the comp plan.
Okay, but there is a more robust, I mean, I think it's right, where is an RS 419?
It's the very beginning, or I'm sorry, very end, so Regulations is where it starts the paragraph.
Yeah, the Regulations section, and it talks about Goal 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's dialogue on the next page about it, also references to HNA.
So I don't know whether it's here or it's up in the Milwaukee's Future, but, I mean, we do say it's 2016, so it's clear that it's, you know, four years old now. But, I mean, maybe we should be saying that updated HNA, an updated HNA will be part of the next phase. I mean, maybe, or, you know, yeah.
Okay, and then there's also on RS 333, Milwaukee's Future, yeah. That's prob, that might be where the biggest heartburn is.
Right.
Is it page RS 33?
333, yeah.
If you still have your paper copy, it's 18.
18. I know, I have a paper copy. Oh, yeah, I do, I forgot. It's what page, Lisa?
18.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I kind of wasn't seeing, so Denny, I didn't see it, maybe, can you point me to, is there a policy that says something about maintaining an updated HNA?
There is not. I mean, we could write a policy like that.
I mean, I think that would address this concern and also, you know, this Milwaukee's Future section.
We would have to say, we would have to define what's updated then.
Well, that's going to be decided for us, I think, with state regulation, we're going to be required to do...
Let's say they come out and say you have to do it every 15 years. We did it four years ago, but we, like I'm saying, at the time, I felt like we weren't using the right criteria to make those decisions. We were using old metro criteria, and I, it happened the way it happened. And it also doesn't reflect our vision, so...
Well, no, I mean, it was supposed to be a snapshot, yeah, it was before that. Yeah, it was a snapshot in time.
Right.
Well, we could, I mean, I think we can craft policy, though, that addresses, you know, what updated means. I don't think that's too hard, that, you know, that it considers market forces, it considers how, you know...
Population projection.
Population, I mean, all, you know, yeah, I think we can come up with...
Climate change.
Yeah.
State considerations, you know, state legislation.
State regulation.
Right. I mean, I think this call-out box on the Milwaukee's Future ought to say something about, "We anticipate due to new population forecasts and new state requirements that an updated HNA, you know, will happen soon," you know, somehow. Some wording, some better wording than that, but...
Maybe add in the second sentence in the call-out box and say that, you know, that... I mean, that was, that was clearly what caught Stefan's eye, was that call-out box.
All right, if we think just adding that language about updating solves the problem, I'm...
I don't feel strongly about a policy either way, I guess, personally. I just think, yeah. I think we need to acknowledge that there were factors that made the HNA, you know, less robust or less complete than we'll need it to be, but whether we dictate a future updating schedule, I mean, we don't generally aren't doing that in these policies. That would, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. All right, well, let's see what Denny and Mary can craft with this call-out box. At the next meeting, we can determine whether or not we, that satisfies the issue, and then we can address it then, either add a policy or re-edit the call-out box or whatever.
I'm going to go ahead and take a stab at a policy. I mean, you know, and then if we, if we want to do it, we'll have something, and I'll just put it, I'll commit to put it in writing. There's plenty of time for you all to see it and look at it, and I promise not to make it too controversial.
Can you gaze into your crystal ball on HP 2001 and post likely align with whatever the state is going to do?
2003, but, no, we still have meetings through October.
All right, so are we good then with Stefan's comment? I think Mary's, we're doing, that was just a, my read of that is that's kind of a go-team kind of comment.
Let's see.
First one, you're right.
Her second one is what led to our discussion about the maps and stuff that we did before, right?
One, I'm interested in one little comment you made, and I don't even know what that would look like or how we would do it or why, but the sort of comment about policy that somehow rewards developers that build more affordable units. more affordable units. And it, it could be, I don't know, I don't know. It could be prioritizing them and their approval process, it could be. But it, it makes us a little more proactive rather than, I mean, what we're doing here with, with the comprehensive plan and the zoning and all that is creating opportunity, right? We're allowing a developer to do, to build housing that's more affordable. There's nothing about any of this that's going to spread on, that's going to encourage it or, or cause it to happen. So I think it's a really interesting comment she's making and, and obviously it's going to take some thinking to figure out what kind of reward that could be, that would be viable, that would be something that A, the city can afford to use and B, that developers are going to find attractive.
Some of those items were called out in, in the Housing Affordability Strategy. And we've, we've done some of them and we do, we're, I think we're pretty darn efficient in terms of timing on applications and so on when compared with other communities. But, you know, there's always more, there's probably always more that you can do to, to, to create incentives. It's usually related to dollars, though. I mean, we're, we're doing it for ADUs right now, right? So.
I mean, that, I mean, that definitely, I mean, it sort of speaks, maybe in the, yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if, I think that we've got some policies here that in different places maybe kind of address her concern that we could probably take to, to really address her concern. I'm just looking through them to try to figure out where that might land. And I don't know if it's under, you know, it could be under, frankly, it could be under all, any of the subheadings. It could be under affordability or sustainability or livability. And, you know, we do have, you know, in, at least some places, we say things like, you know, provide incentives, you know, for certain things that we want. And I think we could definitely do something like that. You know, it seems like providing an, you know, like a, you know, for example, a height bonus or some other sort of, you know, variant, you know, allowance for affordable housing, you know, is, is a type of incentive that doesn't cost the city any money, but can provide for an, you know, for, you know, it's, it's incentive for a developer to do the kind of things that we wanted to do. So we could, we could certainly think of it that way.
But I mean, I think getting that concrete is something for the next phase if we want just a general policy that says.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that that would be a policy. I'm saying either input, you know, create, you know, create a new policy that specifically incentivizes the sorts of things we want to see, you know, around sustainability, around affordability, you know, or find somewhere in one of these policies that kind of gets at, you know, where we, where we strengthen the language a little bit. Because a lot of times we say things like support or encourage, but we don't say things like, you know, incentivize or pursue, you know, and so we could find slightly more active language.
Right.
So I, I think I have some, some suggestions when we get kind of to our own notes in those areas. And maybe we can just be thinking, put in the back of our mind, Mary's notes here as we're going through these seven policies and think about ways we can put stronger language in there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Is Jennifer familiar with how built out we are?
Yes, very familiar.
I felt like her comments were really all for the next phase.
I actually was able to find, again, kind of similarly, a few places where we might just choose a more active verb, because I think that, you know, and I think that staff, actually staff addressed some of this, probably in the exact same locations. But I do, you know, so like, and I'm not going to move out of where I am right now in the matrix. But I think there are a couple of policies in seven, like 711, 721, where we can probably just swap out a better verb and get to her concern. And I.
Well, she, she talks a lot about utilizing public land for that and we don't.
Yeah, I've got a couple draft policies for that.
Okay. All right, so then we'll hold on for yours.
Are we holding on all three of her comments then?
I was just.
I think we already addressed the maps.
Yeah.
Okay. I have. Now, Ms. Wynn's comment, I appreciate the spirit of it. Do you, beyond the things that we're already proposing, which is to allow the missing middle-style housing in more places, does anybody think that there's an opportunity to create any kind of policy that would open up more land to low, or high-density?
Well, and it, well, it's, her concern also addresses subsidized housing. And I, I think that we, I have a tweak to one of the, one of the policies. So on the, on the land banking and also the, the negotiating of public, public-private lands partnerships, whatever. And I think that that might address both of those.
Okay.
You know, maybe we should go to our own comments. I mean, personally, I don't have any other change from the, from the comments on the matrix in seven, on chapter seven. I don't have anything else I think we changed. So I'm just trying to speed things along.
Yeah.
Maybe if, if councilors have specific things they think we changed, then maybe we should just go.
Move on to those and then maybe we can go back to the matrix to see if we've missed anything.
Yeah, and if we can speak to, you know, I, I think it'll be evident to all of us, but I think part of the concern and why we have been going this route is to make sure that people are aware of how, what we're proposing connects back to what they said. So if, if in our discussion, we can say this speaks to Ms. Wynn's concern or something, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I don't think we necessarily did that all the way in the first six chapters, though.
Well, we did, but this is a chapter that has probably drawn the most commentary from the public overall, even if it's not necessarily present here. It was certainly present in our town halls and the planning commission hearings that I know all of us watched and, and paid attention to, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well then, I'm fine with switching it up and doing it that way. I assumed that as people had concepts for addressing these people, they would just bring it up then. But we can do it in reverse. This was just my effort to try and have people understand that we were taking seriously people's comments and taking them into account as we were doing this work, so.
It's just that when every single one of these that we're getting to, we hear, I've got something for that. It starts to feel like maybe we should get to the things.
And it's really difficult to go back and forth because I, you know, I'm trying not to print copies. And so I'm, I'm having to go back and forth within the same document because instead, you know, I'm now, because I've transferred my old notes into my new plan, thinking that that was actually going to be more efficient. But it kind of isn't working that way in this process.
And also, to be fair, we're in the section that's the, the pre-section, you know, then the comments become more about specific policies. And I think at that point, your, your methodology would work a lot. Anyway, we're spending a lot of time talking about how to do it, let's just try doing it differently.
Yeah.
Excellent. So, Wilda, do you have any things that you, any comments that you have?
No, the comments that I had, that I had submitted and addressed were addressed to a three meetings ago.
Thanks for me.
Do you have any comments on chapter seven?
Me? Nope. Nope, I have, yeah, again, I think, you know, the ones I had, that we've, that I had, we've discussed, so, no.
All right, Kathy?
I already, I'm in Wilda's vote.
Okay. All right, go, Angel.
Okay, all right, so on RS 419, this is page 104 of the housing background.
Okay, just a minute, let me get there. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
419?
RS 419.
Yeah, I'm almost there, almost there, almost there. Okay.
I'm hoping we can, I, I have a, I hope it's a minor nitpick. Milwaukee is not known for its mix of housing types. It's quite the opposite. It's 74% dominated by one single housing type. So I wonder if we can just, the, the sentence that says, the very first sentence, Milwaukee has historically been a working-class suburb of Portland with relatively affordable home prices and rents, period.
I'm okay with that.
Let's see, I think we already addressed the graphic that still says family.
Yeah.
I have two new policies and we discussed this last time. And so this is lifted.
Can I stop you for just a sec?
Yeah.
Mary, did you get that last change? I, I didn't, so that, I just wanted to make sure one of us had it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Sorry to move fast, I'm just trying to keep us on target here. Okay, so from the MHAS, I, I lifted and I'm, and I'm suggesting under, so this is on RS 424. I'm proposing two new policies, 7.2.12 and 13. So these are under equity. Although I suppose they could be under affordability, we can talk about that. And they're just, I mean, they're almost verbatim. So 12 would be, when negotiating public-private lands, pursue the goal of reserving some portion for affordable housing where appropriate. It's pretty non-committal, it's what we've done in the past.
Could you drop that into the chat?
Sure, I'll drop them both.
Thank you.
And while typing, can I just get a clarification? Because I'm only seeing a 7.1.10.
Right, I'm suggesting two new policies.
The numbering started with 12.
Oh, oh, maybe I did mean to be somewhere else. That would make a lot more sense.
I thought you said 7.2, dot 2, but dot.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I was looking at the wrong heading. Yeah, I, I'm on affordability, so it would, yeah, that's why.
425, okay.
Yeah, my bad, yeah, so yeah, it's 12 and 13. I'm actually going to have to, can I email these to all of you? Is that okay?
I won't be able to get them with.
I have to, I have to type them out then because I'm having to use two different.
Oh, bummer, you can't copy paste?
Can you email it to yourself and then copy and paste?
I'm using two different computers. No.
Technology makes our lives easier.
This is one of those situations where having three really big monitors would be perfect.
I just haven't gone to pick up another monitor yet.
We might have an extra one. Do you have two big monitors, Ms. Heisey, or three?
No, I've just got the, the Surface and one large monitor. I'm a minimalist, but we do have an old monitor that, that we were going to take in to donate or, or do on, by nothing that, you know, COVID interrupted so many house cleaning projects.
So would that be 7.2.12?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a missing article in there, when negotiating public-private lands deals, transactions?
That's fine. Yeah, this is my very fast bad typing for all of you to see on display.
So when negotiating public-private land transactions, pursue the goal of reserving some portion for affordable housing where appropriate.
Yeah. So I think that that, what I was trying to do there is, you know, elevate that as a goal, but only where appropriate. So I'm not talking about in industrial lands, I'm not talking about on, you know, protected water, you know, watershed area, HCA or, you know, any of that.
And I just was speaking with Leila Mon, neither of us have any concerns. That sounds great.
Okay. It sounds fine to me. On point 13, what about adding the word appropriate in there to continue to find appropriate opportunities to land bank? Or something, I mean, we don't want to just be out there snatching up land because it becomes available and we can't afford it.
Well.
We can afford it anyhow, you have to have money to be able to do that.
Of course.
And not every piece of land may be right for affordable housing and/or for middle-income housing or whichever.
Yeah, I completely agree with all of that. And whether that's, you know, implied that, you know, obviously an opportunity is only one, you know, you can only take advantage of one if you can afford it.
Again, Community Development Director and I have no concerns. That sounds great. Thank you, Angel, for, for all the time and effort to come up with the language.
I didn't, that was in our MHAS.
Oh, perfect.
Added two words.
Good job.
Are we finding or can, can we mandate finding or should that be seek? Does seek feel too weak?
Okay. Need to seek out opportunities?
I mean, I would love it if we could mandate finding, that would be fantastic, but.
Seek works better in a situation like this, I think. Or, I don't know.
And Wilda, to your, I was, I think part of that perform necessary due diligence was kind of getting at that as. was kind of getting at that as well. So, you know, we wouldn't, for example, we wouldn't build affordable housing on, you know, heavily toxic.
Right.
You know, land that we couldn't clean up, you know. That's what I was getting at there. That's where the policy, I think, was getting at when it was written.
Yeah.
Was that you would do due diligence to make sure that it was appropriate for affordable housing, but if we want to spell that out more here.
And it was appropriate and it was, and it's appropriate for the city to purchase it.
Yeah.
In the first place.
Looks good.
Okay.
Head nods all around?
Thumbs up, yep.
On 7.2.3, I wondered if we might change consider to pursue.
Seven, seven what is it?
7.2.3 on RS.
Oh, I'm at the top of that, I'm sorry.
My notes are in the wrong order.
7.3, 3 or dot 2?
Sorry, 7.2.3.
Two. I'll get there.
Page 109 on paper.
Okay. So what was your, what was your consideration of?
Just to change the word from consider to pursue programs and incentives, just a little more active, it's like you can, you could consider it and then dismiss it right away. It doesn't seem like a very, consider just doesn't seem strong enough, but pursue also doesn't tie us to any one particular strategy.
That's true.
I see what you mean. I'm okay with the word change.
All right. Very next page on the call-out. I like, I like defining this for people because I think, you know, people need to understand what affordability means, but I also think that it's, that the, that this might also be an opportunity to, you know, have another snapshot piece of information here about what this means locally. And so I'm thinking about data that exists in the HNA, data, the most, you know, whatever the most recent, the last time I looked at it, you know, the MLS information for median sales prices here in Milwaukee, and actually putting numbers to that so that people understand that 85% of Milwaukee's households do not have the income to afford to buy a home on the market today. That's, I mean, that's, you know, that to me really actually speaks to like this moment in time where we find ourselves and so, you know, the data that I just pulled from the HNA, you know, lets us know what, and we can, I mean, obviously this information can be updated from other sources as well, but that's where the, you know, 15% of Milwaukee's households, okay, sorry, backing up, median home sale topped 400,000 last summer. That is, when you combine mortgage taxes and insurance, that's approximately 2,500 a month. In order to be affordable under these guidelines, that requires a household income of $100,000. Milwaukee's median household income, as we know, is nowhere near that and only 15% of Milwaukee's households make that much money. I don't know if we can add, you know, three bullets there to, you know, further explain this.
I mean, haven't we covered that in the intro? I mean, maybe we just refer back to.
Did we use those numbers? I don't think we have those numbers.
No, not about that specifically, no.
We talked about tweaking some of the graphs to make that.
107, it seems to me the place to do that is on 107.
All right, let me look back at 107.
That's where you had suggested, you know, you'd made some suggestions on that last time.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Yeah, one of those places, I think it needs to be, and I liked it in the affordability box because it really, it merges those two, you know, those like, that definition of affordability with specific local information. That's why I liked it in the call-out.
You know what, maybe we get rid of the call-out here and put all of that information into this graphic on 107.
I like that.
Because, yeah, we should be discussing them together.
Okay.
And that makes room for those new policies.
Yes.
There you go.
My next note is on the very next page, and I don't have super strong feelings about this, but I guess the way I think about, so 7.3.1, ensure that the scale and location. I wondered if we, I, when I think about the impact to tree canopy, I think more about footprint and scale, I think, doesn't get me there. It, scale means different things to different people and so I was wondering if we might really specify here footprint because that's really what affects the tree canopy, not necessarily the scale.
Which number is it?
7.3.1 at the top of 426. We're talking about 40% citywide tree canopy and protecting wetlands and floodplains and natural resources and to me that speaks to footprint.
I think, I think you're right, the footprint is a, is a well-defined thing and scale and location are, yeah, vague and amorphous, so I like that.
I think, I think location does matter because thinking about putting a house in a different place on the lot so that you can keep the mature trees that are there or whatever, I think location still matters, I wouldn't remove that, but.
I'm fine with that, that keeps in my spirit too, you know, and what I was thinking of the spirit of this policy, which is, you know, to provide some flexibility for folks in these areas where you want to protect tree canopy, where you want to protect wetlands, you know, and then I think that opens up, you know, for further conversations about, you know, like, and when we get into actual code writing about things like heights and setbacks and whether there are allowances for, for these types of considerations, protections.
So I would actually say that rather than ensure that, I would say provide flexibility such that, or something to that effect because.
I like that even better.
It's not, it's not saying we need to be more flexible in some of our other roles so that we contain our trees, we're just saying.
Yeah.
And we'll get back to the argument of, you know.
Yeah.
Provide flexibility to.
Footprint and location and the rest will be the same.
It was, the mayor said, provide flexibility to what? To?
Well, provide flexibility on placement, so the location is what we're saying, we can say placement.
I think placement is a better word, I had written that myself, you know.
Placement and scale of a house.
Footprint.
Right, sorry, placement and footprint of new housing so that it's consistent with city goals to preserve open spaces and achieve 40% citywide tree canopy.
Right.
And then, let's see. I think there was a comment, does that work for everybody?
No, I'm here, I started having an unstable connection, so I turned off video.
I think we have a comment on 7.3.8, RS 426, page 111 of the plan, under sustainability. I think allowing for a reduction or elimination in required off-street parking would address that. We had a few comments on that point.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna be resistant to that one.
I mean, reduction can be an elimination.
We may end up, yeah, we may end up there in the next phase, but, yeah, and we may end up there as a result of, you know, state legislation, but I wouldn't want to put that in here. A reduction, yeah, can be an elimination, but, yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with either, actually, I think reduction gets us there.
I agree.
All right. Are we, I think, let me make sure, because the rest of mine might actually be chapter eight.
We did have some other comments on.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm not, because sometimes my notes get out of order somehow. Okay, that's all I have for seven.
Go on with our own on chapter eight or should we go back to the matrix?
Let's, let's go on with our own and then touch back on the matrix if we don't feel like, so do we, just, if that's the way we're gonna do it, do we feel like we've covered everything that people talked about in the matrix?
For seven.
For seven.
I mean, I do, I feel like several of the things are really things for the next, between the staff responses and the, you know, the fact that several of them are things for the next phase, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have a sort of a general comment that I really appreciated the detail that many people provided, you know, Jennifer and Joshua and Cole really provided a lot of education and information to go with their comments, so I thank them for that and I did read it and I do think that that will continue to inform our thinking and our work as we go into the next phase. And maybe some of that information is stuff we should share with the CPIC, honestly.
I think it is.
Yeah, yeah, I agree and I think that, you know, making sure that the CPIC understands, you know, sort of where, where we did adapt, you know, some language in these policies and also the background sections to try to, you know, capture some of those concerns.
Right.
Clarify some of the questions, because I also think that there was, you know, a lot of misunderstanding about, you know, what the intention was behind some of, you know, some of the portions that we were getting a lot of comments on.
Right, right.
Okay then, let's go to eight. Lisa, do you want to kick us off?
Oh, well, I did, there I was, I was looking at the, at the matrix. I do think 8.1.4B, you know, I do think there was a little, you know, as I brought up in questioning some of the public commenters, I think there was a little disconnect in people not understanding the difference between the kind of neighborhood hubs that are neighborhood mixed use and then other ones that will be, you know, smaller, ostensibly smaller hubs. But I do agree with the point that, I liked Stefan's proposed language in the, in the matrix on the compatibility, the thing he came back to us the second time with, which is, yeah, ensure that.
It'll be the comment in red.
Yeah, comment in red, about third, third blurb down if you've got the printed out matrix, ensure that new development is compatible with the height, massing and building form of allowed, or building form allowed by zoning on adjacent residential properties, a hub development need not be identical to a height form of massing to be, or finding of compatibility. I thought this was a good way, I think, I think.
Yeah, I.
I thought that was a good way to address it, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Beyond that, oh, the call-out box on 121 about daylighting the creeks, I've actually been, along with Denny, engaged in a mapping exercise with the GIS guy Nick on our creeks and our piped, or above ground and piped creeks and I think this should be Minthorn and not Mount Scott Creek. I think, as best I can tell, Mount Scott Creek runs from Mount Scott, as you would think, to, through three creeks to Kellogg, so the ones that are going through the International Way Business District, I believe is Minthorn and not Mount Scott. But I don't know if Denny wants to.
The call-out box says Minthorn.
Oh, they corrected that in the new one?
It says Mount Scott and Minthorn.
It is not.
Okay. I have seen maps that had Mount Scott still running through there, so, and is good.
Yeah, I still, I think that map's wrong, but yeah, okay.
I think Wes has some maps that show that, or whatever that's worth.
Shows Mount Scott running through International Way, so, interesting. It, well, it runs across Rust Road, yeah.
I'm not 100% certain that that's where it's coming from, that's just my, my bells are going off that that's where it is.
Okay. I think those are my only substantive, I've given, yeah. Yeah, I think those are my only comments.
Okay, cool. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go for it.
Sure. Right above where we just were, I was wondering, and I'm gonna go back after this, but because we're on this page, so active transportation modes, I wondered if we might just add, because this, it's, you know, it, it's important for creating compact and walkable neighborhoods and employment areas, but I was just wondering if we could be more specific, it's, you know, it also, improving, sorry, improving active transportation infrastructure has proven health benefits, reduces vehicle miles traveled and benefits the environment and provides substantial economic benefit to communities.
Where are you?
I'm on 121, the call-out for active transportation modes.
Ah, okay. You're proposing alternate language there.
I'm proposing alternate language there. Because it just wasn't feeling like this was really.
Yeah, this has bothered me too because when I looked at it, I went, yeah, but really this is about livability more than anything and this language doesn't quite.
Doesn't say why. Why is that stuff important, you know?
Can you read it again?
Sure, and I can, improving active transportation, I'm fine with the first sentence, active transportation includes non-motorized forms, but picking up with improving active transportation infrastructure has proven health benefits, reduces vehicle miles traveled and benefits the environment and provides substantial economic benefit to communities. reduces vehicle miles traveled, and benefits the environment, and provides substantial economic benefit to communities.
I'm fine, that sounds good.
That sounds good.
Hear that with staff, again, with, through the, through your chat, or through?
Can I, yeah, I'll,
Just, just to think about it, active transportation includes non-motorized forms of transportation, which is still leaving the door open for the scooters and electric bikes and all those other things, and God knows what else will come in the future. Do we, do we want to create more opening there, or are we fine with just includes?
What would give more opening, what are you thinking?
So you mean, instead of saying just bikes, bicycles and, and walking, to somehow include something else? So if you just changed including to something like such as, or among others, or something like that, does that get to where you want?
Yeah, that's more like includes. I don't know. But, go.
Personally, I don't think of a scooter as active transportation. I'm sorry, you're not getting any, you're not getting any exercise doing it. It might be a good form of alternative transportation, but it's not active.
It's not active.
E-bikes are a weird gray area, because you do exercise, you have a motor, but we kind of treat them, so far, it's kind of a don't ask, don't tell, treat them like they don't have a motor.
Right, right. I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, and I think, you know, improving the active transportation network benefits those, those sort of extra, you know, good, those other alternative forms, because a lot of, you know, some people consider, you know, transit use to be active transportation, because you have to, you know, walk to get to bus stops, or you're walking between, you know, transfers. And in order to do that, you know, you have to improve the sidewalks or the bike paths, or, you know, which also benefit the scooters and the e-bikes. I don't really think we're missing anything.
All right.
Sorry. Coverer belts.
A common, you know they are.
So, I think the rest of my comments on, well, let me, maybe not. So I have, I have some comments that, that respond to the concern that Mr. Lashbrook raised about terms like community character and identity. And I find a few places where I, I find it kind of problematic. So on the background summary for 8, I'm on page 116 of the plan, 431, RS 431 of tonight's packet. The first paragraph, I don't like maintain the identity and character of Milwaukee. I think that that is, it means different things to different people, it, it, you know, it sounds, you know, it is heard often by, by people as, as very insidious racism. And I think that you can't discount those feelings, and so we need to be super careful about, it's also completely subjective, so I would really prefer that we say something like, "It is an essential practice that if done intentionally, can support a thriving community as Milwaukee experiences growth and development."
Sorry, where are you?
The very first paragraph under context.
Yeah.
RS 431.
I'm on it.
It says, "It is an essential practice that, if done properly," and then goes on and speak, and then says, "maintains identity and character." I think that's super problematic.
Yeah.
And I would prefer us say, pick up with, "It is an essential practice that if done intentionally, can support a thriving community as Milwaukee experiences growth and development." And then over the next several, blah, blah, blah.
Don't want to talk about livability?
I would like to keep livability in there if we can.
I'm okay with livability, I'm very not, it's the identity and character that's problematic. Enhance livability and support a thriving community.
Yeah, yeah, that works.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it might be good to just do a word search through the whole work document for the word "character" and flag them.
I did, so I've got a few more suggestions for you.
Yeah, I agree, that's a completely subjective, yeah.
And that kind of language, I understand how it, how it creeps in here, because it gets used so much, but it, I have a particular resistance to it, because it creates, it creates space for people to feel like their expectations are not being met. There's, there's vague language in here intentionally in a lot of places to give us flexibility, but in this particular instance, I, I think it really does harm because of that very reason, you know, that it does mean some different things to everyone, and so it feels like we aren't delivering, or people feel like they're being lied to, or there's, there's a whole host of negative consequences that come with that, so.
Yep.
But thanks for doing that search, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so directly over, on the right side of the page, we have characteristics again. I would just eliminate it. Design and, the, "Design and future development of redeve," wait, what does that say?
Or redevelopment.
Or redevelopment of these hubs will vary and will reflect the scale and needs of the adjacent neighborhoods.
That works.
Yep, I think that's fine.
Let's see, so there's a whole policy where we use community character, and I have, so RS 440, page 125, policy 8.2.5. I think the best choice here is to just eliminate this policy and put,
What page in the overview, in the whole packet?
Yeah, RS 440.
440, thank you.
It's page 125 of the plan.
Yeah.
It's the very last policy under 8.2, so 8.2.5. Each one of these could fit under one of the previous policies. So A and D and, A, D, and E could be moved to 8.2.4, public space design policies. B and C could be moved to 8.2.3, and then we eliminate the problematic title of community character. I'm not suggesting much else there other than, let's see.
Could you repeat that one more time on where things move to?
Sure, so if you look at them, A, D, and E speak to size, scale,
Design.
Design, you know, enforcement of, you know, regulate and force. Let's see, what did I say, E, yeah, size again, scale. Those all have to do with, like, you know, space, public space design policies type thing.
Okay, but where were they going? That was my question.
Oh, sorry, that, the, the one right above it, 8.2.4.
Okay.
And maybe that means that the 8.2.4 would need to be renamed, because it's not just dealing with public space, but it's dealing with the physical space?
Yeah, it's kind of, I hate to, I hate to throw a lot of, it's kind of two different things.
Well, I mean, here's the thing about community character. Everything that we just talked about is problematic, and none of these don't necessarily relate to each other either. It seems like a, like a grab bag of things that people wanted to insert somewhere.
Yeah, it was. If, what if you dropped the word "character"?
Community design policies?
Okay. I mean, I don't, you know, but, okay, I mean, that's fine, too.
But it was kind of a grab bag, they're all, they were all over the place. But we sort of wanted to get in there, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's better, because 8.2.4 is, is kind of a different kettle of fish.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one comment on A. I wasn't, I just wondered if we wanted to say regulate instead of limit? Because I wasn't really sure what limit meant here, I mean, I understand, like, is it limit the, it says limit the size, but I don't know what, like, what limit the display characteristics mean, means. Do you have insight on that, or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, I have examples that I can think about, but it's not like an exhaust, I just wondered if regulate was a better word.
Already regulate, we already do that. But the intent here was to shrink.
Did we say that?
He's down.
So then let's say reduce.
Yeah. Guesst, out of existence. And not all commercial signage, I'm biased.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Electronic, electronic billboards is what I'm biased against.
The very bird unfriendly signs that,
Yes.
Yeah.
And very unfriendly, and unsafe for pedestrians and cyclists, and yes.
Yes, all of the above. Okay, no, that, I mean, that's fine, that was, that was just a,
So the change would be to reduce, then?
Well, reducing size makes sense, I don't know how you reduce display characteristics. Yeah, grammatically, I don't know if,
You can reduce light pollution, for sure.
Well, limit the si, it's, reduce the size and limit the display characteristic.
Okay. Is everybody okay, I, sorry, one more thing, under E, the word compatibility, I mean, that wasn't one that I did a find and replace throughout, because I don't know that it's as problematic as character. But it does throw a red flag for me, I don't know if, if it does for anybody else. If we,
Yeah, I, I tried to figure out something else there, and I didn't get very far.
Neither did I.
I was trying to think of a replacement word for compatibility, and it was, shoot, just had it. I don't know that it made a big enough difference, obviously, I didn't make a comment about it, so I did a lot of investment in it being better.
I think that's all I have for 8.
Okay, so did we decide we're leaving 8.2.5, and we're eliminating or ignoring character?
Yeah.
It was integration rather than compatibility, but that's kind of weird. I don't know that's,
Yeah, integration means more melding the two together, not making sure that
Yeah.
they all feel like where I am.
Right. But it's true that introducing language that is more about the feel of where I am, you know, it sort of pushes us back into that space where everyone has expectations and,
They're not the same.
And they're not,
Right.
To me, it's, you know, I mean, compat, like, some, one person might think that, you know, a 10-minute walking neighborhood is, is, you know, that's, that's compatible, for, you know, other people consider, you know, don't think that those uses should be close together. So I,
Well, but I think the thing in this is that it says with surrounding uses, not, you know, somebody's viewpoint of it, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually my concern, is that, like, if, you know, a 20-minute neighborhood means that I've got a grocery store next to a residential neighborhood, those are two very different uses. So those two things, but, you know, someone might find that incompatible. I find it compatible, because my goal is for a 20-minute walking neighborhood. But someone else's goal is, you know, not, maybe not the same, and so I do think that there's just, there's subjectivity there that is, you know, concerning in a document like this.
Well, do we even, I mean, because we addressed this in the neighborhood hubs, do we even need this?
Yeah, do, yeah.
I think it's different than the hubs, because it's, it's about, in those commercial districts, you know, how do you kind of blend that commercial district, or require that that commercial district step down to adjoining residential districts, if you, if you want that? Or any of the, if they're mixed-use districts next to districts that are primarily residential.
So that leads me to think of a word more like transition and not compatibility.
Well, I think that's, that's probably a good point, but I mean, I think that's what is, that is probably what you could do here, you could put that in if, if you think that's appropriate. This is, again, trying to use the concept of, of form-based regulation, trying to get at the, the bulk and scale to try to make things fit better. But that is all about transitions.
So we have this policy about transitions in the central Milwaukee, in the NMU, and then we have the language we've talked about in the hubs, so where else would this apply?
It could apply in, I don't know, you know, it's a, it's, if we have commercial areas, I think all the commercial areas are going to be covered either by hub policies or other, other commercial areas. The down, the, the central Milwaukee area is really a town center zone. The NMU at, with the Safeway at King, I don't think we called that out as a hub. It would be that area.
I think it is, well, I mean, it's certainly one of the hubs we studied, yeah.
But we ended up not calling it a hub, and it has the NMU zoning already, which is a mixed-use zone.
And so we have this kind of transition language for that. 8.1.3E, we have it for central Milwaukee generally, 8.1.2D. So I guess I don't really see why we need it here.
Higher-density residential to lower-density residential? I, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm, I don't know, I don't think it hurts anything, I don't think it necessarily makes that much difference.
Okay, but so we're talking about,
We've done it, since you've pointed out, we've done it in a number of other places where there, there is,
Rather than encourage compatibility, we're saying provide appropriate transition or something?
Be okay with eliminating it or changing it to transition?
To encourage transitions to surrounding areas, you know?
Yeah.
Encourage or acquire transitions?
I don't know, I'd sooner get rid of it, that whole, like, trying to wordsmith this to whatever and whatever, and we don't even know, and I, transition doesn't mean anything to me.
I mean, it, it only, in the context of size, bulk, and scale, it does. But I, but I also really, I mean, if, if, if we're already addressing it in all of, in the other policy places where it actually, you know, makes sense,
And we are.
We can eliminate it.
I mean, what if somebody wanted to build three-story duplexes around?
Well, we allow three-story, single-dwelling units, so,
Right, single-dwelling, but what about if it were duplexes or triplexes? I mean, we'd want to encourage them, I would think, in certain places, but would that be compatible? You know, or transition, or whatever.
Yeah, again, it comes down to your definition of compatible versus mine.
Exactly, another one of those, you know, soft words.
I'm fine with eliminating it.
I am, too.
Was that everyone?
Added so many words, maybe taking out a few isn't,
So we're eliminating E.
If staff comes up with a reason, what it covers, I mean, you can let us know before the next hearing, what it covers that we might not have elsewhere, but it seems like we've discussed this pretty thoroughly.
And if that happens, I'd, And if that happens, I'd really ask for suggested language that is different from compatibility.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything?
I don't.
All righty, should we move on to nine?
Or should we think about dinner? It's almost.
Counselor, Counselor Baby asked for a seven o'clock. I wasn't sure if earlier was.
I just didn't want a 5:30. I, I'm fine with dinner now if that's what people want to do. I just.
I don't know. I hadn't planned on eating dinner.
We have, we have very few.
We work right through.
I just went back to the matrix and just wanted to look. We only have a couple of comments on eight. I wondered if we just.
Oh, go through those really quickly?
Eight and then we'll have dinner. How about that?
Are we doing eight or nine? Sorry, we were saying eight.
I meant, maybe we could go through, because there were only a couple of comments on the.
Okay.
For eight. I thought maybe we might just finish up eight that way.
Oh, I, I think we did. I just was.
Yeah, I think we did too.
Oh, did we?
I think we covered everything on eight. I thought you were talking about nine because there's only one comment on nine.
Oh, so maybe, um.
And it's about numbering.
Last break.
It's just, it's NISA and it's just about numbering.
No, there was, I'm one, not the only one on nine, but there's, yeah, there was one other one, but, um.
Yeah, there was a comment about using native plant and drought-resistant species in our parks. Um, and the comment noted that we do encourage that in a different policy that is not specific to parks. And I don't know how much control we have over what we plant in our parks, given that NCPRD does the management.
Yeah, but we, in conjunction with NCPRD, do the master planning. Right, and our policies are going. I mean, I, I would think if we write a policy, that NCPRD would take that into account when they.
We generally get planting plans from them for new, you know, new, new planting, so we, we are the planning commissioner, you know, city in some way.
Okay, I, sorry, I, I don't think that Stefan's comment is actually addressed by what we talked about on 8.1.4. Because it's, again, it's the use of, of like the word compatible.
I was looking at 8.3.4.
Well, so the one that's in red was his more recent comment.
I thought that was what we changed.
That's what we agreed to in, to.
Yeah.
Oh.
Didn't we just do that? Yeah. Yeah, we just agreed to change it to, to his language.
Because that was after I questioned him about, you know, did he, was he looking at the two differences between the NMU and the hubs?
Okay, thank, sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the native and drought-resistant plants in parks.
We've been using the term, um, I think, I mean, Peter's, I think Peter was on the phone earlier, climate adaptable or something like that.
Climate adapted, yeah. I was just going to say that. A policy that supports the use of native plants and climate adapted. Do we want to say and or or? Because.
I like or.
Or. I think or is better because there is a distinct possibility that in 20 years, none of the native plants will survive here.
And which policy are you looking at?
Section nine is just a general comment from Courtney Johnson.
Right.
Right, but where would we?
Yeah, but where, yeah, where is it in our plan? Where would we?
It seems like she's suggesting a new policy specific to parks that, that is similar to the policy in 6.3.5.
What could? Uh, could we put it under planning and design, under goal 9.2 on page 133? Because that does speak to creating solutions that are environmentally sustainable.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 133, which goal number?
Uh, 9.2, planning and design. It talks about creating solutions that are environmentally sustainable.
That's where it should go. And then 6.3.5, she just kind of was.
That was a staff comment in response, and so maybe just a similar policy that gets sort of copied and pasted into the parks.
Okay.
Or could just, couldn't it just, sorry, hi, Kathy, did you have a suggestion on where it should, where specifically it would go in a policy?
Uh, just under goal 9.2, it could just be its own, you know, 9.2.9.
I, I would lean towards it being its own, because it.
Yeah.
It is.
It doesn't quite fit with anything else there. You may.
9.2.9, is that what you're?
Point nine? Do we have that many? Okay.
9.2.9.
Oh, okay. Um, so the one, so 9.2.5 is already talking about community gardens and urban food forests, which is some of what that 6.3, whatever, is talking about. So, I mean, I don't think it's a matter of wholesale copying that language. I think this one is just more focused on the climate adaptive, or the climate resilient, I think, is the way it's written in the other one.
Native, native and climate resilient, native or climate resilient species, yeah. Does that feel like enough direction, Danny and Mary, to do the fine tuning? Great, thanks.
Yeah. All righty, so anything else on nine?
Um, I had one question at the beginning in the preparatory thing, which is, you know, we tried to, um, well, I guess, no, I, I was going to comment on the, uh, the paragraph about NCPRD. Because we, you know, we tried to use the words parks provider and not name them, but I guess this really is a, uh, you know, is probably something we do need to call out, uh, issues that are raised in this paragraph, so, um.
I don't know how else you talk about that specific history. It would be hard to generalize that, and it is important to share those pieces, I think.
So the, um, the next paragraph, status of individual park master plans. I mean, I think that's a legitimate point. I do notice we also talk about park, you know, the adoption process above for park master plans. So we cut, there's a little bit of, I think, repetitiveness between 128 and this section, about lacking the flexibility and, um, so I guess, I don't, I don't know, I just saw some repetitiveness there. And this second one, I mean, the first time, the, uh, end of the context, paragraph or section says to add flexibility, policies call for creation of new parks zones, blah, blah, blah. So since we've said all that above, do we really need this here? Here, we're just calling out the problem again and we're not saying anything about what we're doing about it. And I guess I'd see a fair amount of repetitiveness.
Yeah, probably, probably not. I mean, there might be one or two thoughts in the status of the individual park plans, um, on page 129, that maybe there, maybe there's something that moves up into 128 to expand that just a touch. I don't know if it's complete. No, it even says that we've adopted them as ancillary documents. That seems pretty repetitive. You're right.
Okay, so we'll scratch it on 129?
Yeah, it's probably fine. One was sort of in the general context and the other was key issue. Though, I mean, we called them out as a, as a, as one of the things we wanted to address. I think it's probably fine to, to get rid of it.
I mean, I don't have a strong feeling about where it goes. It just seems like it's, it is very duplicative and it'd be good to just have it in.
Let's just do this. We'll, we'll change it to eliminate the repetitiveness and give it a little bit more thought about which spot it goes to.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, then, uh, we will take a half-hour break. Is that what we're doing for dinner? Thirty-minute break for dinner. We will be back at 7:03.
I want to hang up. Just mute yourself and turn your camera off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're on air.
So we are back in session after dinner break and we are moving on to section 10 of the COT plan. So who's got stuff?
No, I think the staff comments address the one public comment we had in that section.
The one about solar renewable energy in that which is addressed in that other 3.8.
Yeah, it's in the climate section.
Have anything else? Are we moving on to 11 then?
I was thinking I want to do one here real quick. Okay. I mean, I guess what I'm thinking about is that you in other places in this put in things that are redundant because somebody considering something from one particular angle might not read another section. And we have this section on energy and communication services. I don't think it would be misplaced to create a policy that talks about, I don't know what the verb is, but creating public renewable energy sources. Sorry.
You mean beyond community solar? Because that is...
Well, right now, that's the only thing we, okay, I'll give you an example. There's a lot of cities, I think Portland's one of them, that are putting these turbine systems in their water mains if they're on a high gradient. And that would be a public, you know, that would be our, our energy source, that would, something we would create. And it's not, doesn't have anything to do with solar. And I'm sure, I mean, maybe there's an opportunity for wind or something, I don't know. But I think she's right that, you know, we have a section on energy and communication services and it feels like we're, you know, we could, even on using just policy 10.9.6, where we say promote and prioritize clean energy production and use, look for opportunities to create publicly, community level renewable energy sources or, I'm not wordsmithing well right now, but...
So something like promote and prioritize clean energy production and use, including but not limited to seeking local renewable energy generation opportunities where appropriate?
Seeking public renewable energy.
I mean, whatever. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. I see where you're going. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that works. Did you catch all that, Mary?
Thank goodness. Luckily, it's recorded.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, would you necessarily want to limit it to public? Would you, would you want to exclude the opportunity for public private?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Is there a reason we don't just make an independent bullet that says encourage the development of locally generated, local generation for renewable energy sources or something to that effect?
Well, it already has. I mean, it has promote and prioritize clean energy production use. That's the same thing.
But locally.
Is that, to me, when I read that, that's assuming that somebody else is doing that. Right? That that's, that's a solar developer, that's a, you know, PGE, that's somebody else doing that. What I'm hoping to get in here is the concept of the potential of the city looking for opportunities to do it itself.
And would that need to be local? Or would that be, I guess my question is, are you looking for roof mount systems? Or are you looking for systems that power our facilities that we own? Or does ownership matter?
All of the above.
Because all those things are different, right? So if your goal is that you want the city to prioritize renewable generation in a cost-effective way for city taxpayers, I think that that's, that is a different thing than we're going to develop something just for the sake of being local, or different for the sake of we're going to encourage other people to do it. I mean, so is your goal that the city builds renewables?
My goal is that the city takes opportunities that arise. And then I, my, the one that the, that's most easily coming to mind is, is turbines inside of the water pipes. Right? That's, that would absolutely have to be a city project. That's not something PGE could do. And, and we're not going to do it unless we are specifically, that's a policy, that we are looking for opportunities to do things like that.
I think the city, especially if you're talking about the utility system, right? So if you're talking about in our water pipes or in our sewage pipes, then you're talking about the city will investigate opportunities for installing renewable resources in our traditional services or in our utility services. If you, but I think you also probably want us to investigate solar on the rooftops of new buildings or of our existing buildings. So then it's probably just the city will routinely investigate opportunities for renewable energy generation to the benefit of the city or something to that effect, right? Because you're also saying, I don't know. There are about 15 things you're talking about in this. And I love all of them. They're all great. But we've got a bunch of pieces that go into what you're talking about.
Yep. So what's a catch-all two-sentence, either add-on to 10.9.6 or brand-new 10.9.7?
The city will routinely investigate opportunities for renewable generation to power our facilities and, or ours and other facilities. Because you also then could become a net generator.
Right. Yes.
Okay. And Mary, I'm happy to talk to you after this. We can work on some cleanup language with Peter. But I think that if that generally gets to what you're trying to do, Mary, we can work from there.
So just to be clear, in 6.3.8, we already have explore opportunities for increasing distributed carbon-free energy generation through community solar projects and other collective efforts.
And like I said before, very often in this document, we repeat concepts in completely different sections because somebody who is considering something wouldn't necessarily read both.
Actually, I thought we had striven to reduce that. I mean, we definitely started out there, but I thought we had striven to reduce that.
The only, the only word I'm hearing lacking in what councillor Beatty just read would be whether or not the city has a responsibility to investigate it for us. So if, if you want to add something there, you could add something on to that sentence, or you could create something new. But we're, Mary and Denny and I can talk about that offline if that helps.
Okay, yeah.
But it sounds like there's a general agreement. You want the city, something to be directed to the cities, it's off the government agency. Okay.
Okay. So unless there's something else on 10, we're going to 11?
Again, at the new. Anyone else?
All right. 12.
So this is where the whole MPA stuff, what pages is this in the new, we did have some comments on the MPA and labeling and defining that. What page is chapter 12 in the new version online?
Chapter 12 begins on page RS 475.
Dang. Let this, okay.
Yeah. Until somebody else has found something, I utterly agree with Stefan about 12.4.3.
Yeah, I have the same note. I, I agree.
Yeah, I had the same note as well. So I thought we had an issue about, I thought we were going to relabel or do some clarifying of what the MPA is in relation to the UGMA.
I thought it was just a mapping question. And I thought we had taken care of it. But I could be wrong.
I, I raised that and it was a mapping thing.
The idea was again that we used UGMA for both the agreement and the area, trying to rename the area to just try to simplify it. So we didn't have that confusion. But we could always go back and make sure that we use the words, the area subject to urban growth management agreement.
Yeah, I was looking for the first, yeah. I'm not sure there's a clause that defines. Like, okay, under, on the old page 160, there's a reference, there's a definition of what the UGMA is. But then... But then I thought we jumped right into using a definition. Oh, here we go. Okay.
It's, the MPA is defined on page 167.
Okay. Okay, but so the MPA is defined there, but we've been using it since 161. It's also defined, I mean, it's also referenced on 161, within the Milwaukee Planning Area MPA. So that's the first time we've used the term and, and, you know, given the acronym. But we haven't tied that to the, in neither place do we explain that that's this part of the UGMA that's not in the city. And I guess, you know, I mean, maybe people will figure that out, but I think we ought to say it.
Okay.
Explicitly somewhere. It should be defined early and probably where the first use is. So probably page 161.
Is, and I thought we had decided to put it in the glossary.
Yeah, that's, I, I, that's what I was just, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it clear everything up if we just put it in the glossary? And?
Well, I mean, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting it in the glossary. I guess I just think somebody reading this is going.
Yeah, you're right.
MPA and they're not related, they're not connecting the dots, I guess. Yeah, I mean, I don't feel strongly about that, but it just feels like a, yeah.
Sorry, I'm just not, where, so would it help if we just simply the very first mention of MPA, you know, spelled it out and then put the MPA in quotes, like in parentheses?
Well, yeah, I would say on page 161, under annexations. By the way, I love the annexation map. The, uh, I guess this is where we should talk about that, but, um, the, uh, yeah. Milwaukee is continuing to work with blah, blah, to amend service agreements to land that's currently within the city limits and within. Yeah. I mean, see, we've talked about UGMA and here we're introducing this and we're not explaining the connection of the two.
So if I put the call-out box there, would that make it better?
Yeah.
Versus in the policy?
Maybe a sentence. Oh, well, see, the, your call-out box does, also doesn't relate it to the UGMA.
Yeah, I think it needs to just say that it is that, the call-out box should say that's the area subject to the UGMA.
Right. There's not currently within city limits, but within the area of the UGMA or something like that. And maybe that's just a sentence at the end of, like, actually before the annexations, at the end of the, the paragraph about the UGMA. I mean, I don't know that you need to move the call-out box. I would just maybe add a sentence in there.
No, I'm not sure where you are when you're saying that.
Page 160?
Yeah, where 160 flows over into 161, the bottom of 160 is the paragraph that describes the UGMA.
Yeah.
And then the.
So, yeah, the very first sentence, Lisa, it says, establish a planning area boundary. And so it's almost like you could put in just a really quick parenthetical that that's the MPA.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that would work. That would work. I, I, I would should give people's background of the map. The reason I requested a map was I happened to stumble on one for, I was looking for some other kind of map, but I stumbled on, in, in other cities and I stumbled on one for Sherwood or somewhere, somewhere in southwest, southwest of town. And they had, I mean, theirs, much more of their town had been, you know, their original town had been tiny and much more had been cobbled in in recent decades. So, I mean, ours doesn't tell us a lot about what the size of the original Milwaukee was. But I think it's still fairly informative that, you know, since the 60s, we really have, I mean, it's, it reinforces what this text says. We haven't had, you know, we haven't had a lot of growth from incorporation, from annexation.
Is there a spot where we might reference the map, like see figure?
Uh.
Probably under on page 161, right there where we're talking about annexations, right? Actually, that one actually has a, has a, needs to be fixed because there's a reference to the MPA boundary without the, the map number inserted. Or maybe, I'm looking at the old copy, maybe Mary's done that.
Yeah, that's already fixed.
Okay. Yeah, but that same, that same paragraph could reference that annexation, the historical annexation now.
Yeah, I thought we said something about, but I realize now I was reading the part about how we're not taking a passive approach to annexation of these MECI properties. I always thought there was more language about taking a passive approach to annexation generally, but I guess there's really not. I mean, I think you could, you know, you could reference it anywhere. It's just kind of a bit of historical. I mean, it belies this thing that I've heard from people in Oak Grove that, you know, Milwaukee's been trying to annex us forever, blah, 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 blah. You know, we haven't grown much from annexation, so it don't, doesn't look to me like.
So is there consensus that you want the annexation map in and that this would be the area to put it?
I'm fine with that. I think it makes, I mean, that's, we have a paragraph on annexation, so that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Fine.
Nick is preparing a new map. He's supposed to have it done by the, um, before the end of the, I, I gave him too much time. I said by the end of the month, so. Hopefully they'll have it done soon enough.
Didn't have anything else.
Are we going to do something with 12.4.3?
Oh, yeah, I thought we agreed.
Agreed on what? Did I miss a concept?
Oh, just eliminating community identity. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with just eliminating, just saying annexation programs maintain levels of service for current Milwaukee residents.
I was muted and I said the exact same thing, so yeah. So we're in agreement.
All right. Just to play a little devil's advocate, does that say that we're not going to have those levels of service for the people that we just annexed in?
I mean, no, to me, but I get your point. I mean, it's, if, you know, it should definitely be a, a, you know, an equitable exchange or, you know, no, no one, new residents shouldn't be treated any less or more.
Right.
So.
Well, and if we weren't, we probably wouldn't be able to annex anybody, but, um, the, uh, I mean, we could add a clause. Maintain levels of service for current Milwaukee residents and equitable service for the new resident, you know, I don't know. There's probably a more elegant way to say that, but yeah, I have no problem with adding a clause like that.
Okay, do you?
Or maybe just, you know, get rid of the maintain levels of service and just speak to the equitable levels of service for current and future Milwaukeeans. I mean.
I mean, I know that, I remember during the discussion, there were people that had concerns that, you know, we would annex some huge portion of unincorporated Clarkamas County that had terrible roads and we would spend a whole bunch of money bringing that up to service and then not, you know, we would ignore the current residents. So I, I do think we need to say something. I just, um, and I actually, in all honesty, was fine with what you first suggested, but, you know, hearing that again in my head, I went, Brian, what does that mean for the new residents?
Yeah, I guess that's why I think that, you know, just saying equitable across the board is maybe the, you know, the solution there because, like Lisa said, I mean, we can't, you can't even envision a future in which, you know, large-scale annexation happens without a promise of equitable service throughout the city, you know? That, that doesn't, if it's a ballot measure, it doesn't pass unless it is.
Well, so, I mean, if, if my dream comes true of the state or growing a spine and saying that, um, there shouldn't be areas of unincorporated urban, you know, city, uh, that within five years, everybody who is in an urban area must be annexed or incorporate themselves, that is exactly the kind of scenario in which, um, you would have a huge piece come in and potentially to the detriment of our.
Yeah, but.
Like on that.
Well, I mean, let's, I mean, play that through, you know, like there, in that, within that legislation, there would be, you know, we would have to have agreements in place between the jurisdictional partners, right? So the county would have to find a way to reimburse us somehow for the unimproved roads that should have been improved. We would battle it out over who owes what to whom. And, I mean, there would be a whole long process of that transaction, especially if it were enforced through legislation like that. And then if it were a ballot measure, the same thing, I think, would have to, you know, would have to, um, um, whatever, play, play through. I mean, there would have to be, in either of those scenarios, I still think there's an equitable, there's a conversation about equity and it's, you know, it's, it's an equal exchange where, where everybody feels like they're getting something out of it and nobody's being shorted.
Right, but I think what we wanted to say is, this is the level that current citizens of Milwaukee are at and we're intending to bring everybody else up to that while maintaining, you know, not dragging.
I was going to say, if we eliminate, if we start going down equitable and eliminate the word maintain, I think that is going to give rise to concerns that maintain, I mean, without maintain, equitable can be down here, you know?
Yeah, I see your point. I just wonder if we can.
So what?
Maintain and lift up.
Right, that's.
All right.
I've got a suggestion.
Great.
Ensure that annexation programs provide equitable level of, levels of service for all Milwaukee residents.
While maintaining.
Well.
That does it.
And maintain, yeah, yeah, Denny, I think that the problem that I was not getting and I just now understand, so I'm just going to repeat it for myself, make sure, is that that means that levels of service could be lower to create equitable service levels, where Milwaukeeans currently enjoy a high level of service and we could reach the goal that you and I just said by lowering services for everybody. That would be equitable.
Yep. So what we want to say is, we want to maintain the level of service that we currently have and bring everybody else we just annexed up to that. So.
So does that speak to the concerns that you brought up earlier, Mark, of, of prior testimony where people were worried that huge annexations would lead to neglect in other parts of the city?
No, because we're maintaining the other parts of the city.
Okay.
We are maintaining everybody else in the city that's currently there at the current good level and then bringing the new area up to it.
Is that a, I, I mean, I feel like Mary and, and Denny are planners who write policy for a living.
Right.
And I feel like that's probably very good direction to come up with planneries to get here, right? Cause we aren't, we don't have the vocabulary apparently.
They're both smiling.
I think Denny's probably writing it right now.
I'm trying.
All right.
What about, let's try this one. It may, it might sound clumsy, but let's see. Ensure that annexation programs maintain levels of service for current Milwaukee residents while providing an equitable service level for properties being annexed.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Anything else on 12? All right, moving on to 13.
Well, that's the one that we haven't done.
Yeah, that's a.
We're waiting.
Great, continue.
Well, we're waiting on the TSP. I guess I do think maybe we ought to say something about double-tracking and the challenges it could present for Milwaukee. I'm not sure where I think we should say that. It doesn't really fit with the way this is structured now.
Connectivity.
Yeah, I was, yeah, like reliability.
Could, would you then, are you saying add like 13.10?
Or does it belong up in the, the first two, you know, the introduction paragraphs where we talk about, um,
Well, they're pretty short. I kind of like actually the idea of reliability and mobility, like adding it to 13.5.
Yeah.
Like adding a sentence that says, address challenges posed by potential expansion of rail.
Ensure that we are prepared to.
Well, we're in a directive, prepare to, prepare to address.
Yeah, prepare to address double, you know.
I, I would even like us to maybe, maybe, I mean, I, I totally am really sensitive to the idea that double-tracking is going to be an even bigger, you know, barrier potentially. But I think that already the railroad is a barrier. I consider it as violent of a, you know, of a mode of transportation as the, as the two freeways that intersect our city. And so I wonder if, you know, we can, we can address this and, you know, I mean, I'm fine with mentioning double-tracking, but I think that, you know, that 224, 99E and BUP and the railroads are all major barriers and we could put something in here that addresses that.
We can't. I, I, like I've been saying in some of the emails, it's, it is in our transportation plan, unless I am really badly mistaken. We actually have called out overpasses to get us over. But, um, yeah, having policy in the comp plan that speaks to connectivity. Reliable. 24/7/365.
Yeah, it could even go under safety if we, if we were to describe it as, as, you know, violent transportation. What, who, there was a, there was a, a transportation engineer who came and spoke to us at a study session. There was a, there was a, a transportation engineer who came and spoke to us at a study session a couple of years ago and he spoke about just how, you know, I mean, it's, it's a violent form of transportation. You know, it's, it's, you know, extremely unsafe and the speeds make it so and the, the mass of the vehicles or cars, it could go under safety.
I guess I like it better under thirteen point five.
I'm fine with it there too.
I'm not.
I might, I'm, I don't think you have to make it fit somewhere because these goals are out of the current TSP and not in here. I, I almost think it would be better to make it a standalone direction for updating the TSP.
Okay, so make it a thirteen point ten?
Yeah, I think that, I think that is maybe a better solution.
And I agree with Angel that we call it out as dealing with the railroads in general and then we can sort of strengthen it with a mention of the potential double tracking, but.
Yeah, what do you, I don't even know that we have to mention double tracking. We could just talk about expansion of service or expansion of use because it's also the long oil trains and things like that that are increasing in number. And I will tell you, even the little line here in Island Station, the numbers are way up on how many trains come through here.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I just wanna, sorry, I guess I like, I also really like the idea of calling out the highways too because, you know, there's been talk about of, you know, expanding 99E, you know, and widening that. And I don't know how true that is, but I've heard the rumor in my neighborhoods for so many years that, that I think there must be some truth to it. So I like the idea of saying expanding service because that could, it doesn't necessarily mean just double tracking on the railroads. Like you said, it could also mean, you know, you know, what ODOT would call improving 224 and 99E.
Yeah, I'm, in all the six years of JPAC that I've been going to, I've never heard them talk about making either one of those six lanes, but.
Well, it's already eight in portions of 99E where I live, so. At Ocho Co, I think there's like, if you count the turn lanes, it is a massive freeway.
I think that the direction, I can understand where that rumor may have come from, but I think that the overall regional transportation direction has moved in different, in different ways. You know, we're talking about rapid transit bus lines and, and how to fit that within the context of the current structure at this point.
Sure, and I'm, I, you know, it's not like we have a whole lot of control over what, what they do with their lanes. But we do have control over how we treat, you know, maybe going over top of them, you know? We, we somehow, money falls out of the sky and we've got room, you know?
Yes!
Money for an overpass, right? So I just, I guess I just like the idea of expand, you know, if we're, if it's gonna be a whole new section on its own, then why not include railroads and highways?
Denny started the whole thing.
Let's call it, let's make the goal, the TSP update. So the goal itself is TSP update and then it's address these issues. So we know we want to address the double tracking and we want to address the issues of these crossings of the, of the arterials through the city.
Not, are they arterials or is that what the highways are called?
Two twenty-four and McLaughlin.
Yeah.
So wait, are you saying make thirteen point ten TSP update or making the overall overarching section goal the TSP update?
Thirteen ten is the TSP update and then it is, you know, these are, these are the issues that are, that right now we know are key issues that need to be addressed in that TSP update. Maybe it's future TSP update, but it's like the, this is kind of direction from this council to that project, that these are things that we're aware of and we know need major attention.
I mean, you know, we are also aware of a gazillion other things which we could start. If we start listing under the general heading TSP update, we may be here till Friday. So maybe it's, uh, update the TSP to address railroad and highway barriers or.
Oh, yeah, what if we just call it barriers?
Yeah.
I mean, instead of saying anything about highways and railroads, just say barriers? Or highway and road, and railroad barriers?
I'm saying goal thirteen point ten slash barriers.
Oh. All the other ones are kind of one and two word. That would be more consistent with the way this chapter, which is kind of different from other chapters is written.
Well, it just isn't fleshed out yet.
Right, and then the sentence could say something along the lines of, you know, we, you know, TSP needs to address barriers within our transportation network, including 99E, 224, and the railroads.
Yeah.
I like that.
Is that railroads or railroad?
Railroads.
Yeah, we've got multiple.
Multiple.
Okay. Update the TSP to address barriers, um, it's not within the transportation, barriers within the transportation system or?
Just barriers impeding.
Barriers.
You're connecting.
Including highway two twenty-four, um, 99E and the railroads. So update the TSP to address transportation system barriers, including highway two twenty-four, 99E, and the railroads.
Yep.
Yeah.
Ding ding ding.
That is the biggest issue for the city, in my opinion, you know, the, how divided the city is by two twenty-four and the railroad. It's like, means so much the downtown, you know?
Yeah, for such a little city, to have that much cutting it up is ridiculous.
So in the, are we ready to move on to the glossary real quick?
What do we need to do with glossary?
I was, I was just gonna point out that the MPA did not get added.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure Clackamas Regional Center got added. It did not.
Clackamas Regional, oh, Regional Center. So. I'm looking at the definition of daylighting in the, um, I'm kind of torn about bringing this up, bringing it up in the interest of being a, you know, full disclosure or whatever. Um, in the discussions of daylighting at the CPAC and other places, I was very much like, you know, that that's pie in the sky, that, um, that's not gonna be something, uh, that's gonna be, you know, financially so burdensome that, you know, it's never gonna happen. Uh, and that, you know, and I was thinking about downtown in particular, that, you know, it's got all the infrastructure built on top of it. And, and the mayor made the point, what, when, about when the big one comes and breaks everything, you know, we should be prepared to, um, you know, capitalize on that. Um, I was still fairly, um, you know, I was okay with the language we settled on about daylighting, but I was really, you know, because, you know, we kept it modest. Um, the mapping that Nick has done indicates that Spring Creek, where Spring Creek is piped is not, I thought it was somewhere like around the library and the North Main and Harrison and right sort of through there. But in fact, it indicates that it's up along two twenty-four, that it's up along the embankment, uh, you know, like behind the bowling alley and behind the, um, Odd Fellows and then goes out that way.
That is one of the, so Spring Creek is, is an interestingly used name in the city of Milwaukee. To my knowledge, there are probably eight different revolutes called Spring Creek. One of them indeed does exactly what you just said. It goes through my old property and runs then behind, uh, well, it gets undergrounded just before it gets to the bowling alley. Um, but there's also one, there are two on the Waldorf property that at various places and in various, that are also undergrounded. Um, and then there's one more and now I'm forgetting where it's at.
Is it in Spring Park? Because I think Spring Park is named for the springs, isn't it?
Maybe. I don't remember, but I seem to remember there being another one that was disconnected from all of that. But you're right, the one that goes through my old property does, was piped. It's like they collected a bunch of springs under two twenty-four and they have it pop out uh, just behind those apartments.
So there's two pieces. There's one that comes from where your old property was and then there's the one that comes from the pond behind the library. And that, those come together somewhere like on the Odd Fellows property into one pipe.
Right, right. And, and the, and the ponds collapse the two pieces that go through the Waldorf School.
Right, right, right. Um, so all of that to say, maybe daylighting is not as crazy as I thought it was. Uh, as those properties redevelop, maybe it really will be something to consider. Um, getting it, I mean, you know, it's still gonna have to be piped under Main Street and, and two twenty, and McLaughlin to the, to Johnson Creek, but maybe possible to daylight more of it.
Well, you could do one of the big box culverts that, that they're doing.
Right.
And create an essence of stream that.
Yeah, that, that new box culvert over on the spring water. Great job of restoring some pretty good habitat in a lot of ways. I mean, they also built a meander and spent millions of dollars in lots of other ways.
Yeah, what they did on the creek coming out of, um, I'm blanking on the name of the creek. It comes out of the college, comes out of, uh.
Oh, Crystal Springs.
It is also Chris, yeah.
Reed, yeah.
Reed, yeah. Yeah, so. So are you suggesting that we strengthen that language?
I'm not. I'm just fessing up to what I know, what I've learned. I mean, I think the language, you know, covers us. It gives us.
I agree. All right, so on our matrix, there's a whole bunch about the history and I kind of feel like Angel did a good job of rolling ninety-seven percent of that in.
Mm-hmm.
Ready to talk about the history?
So I first want to know what's our history section because what I got, what's in the, what's in the plan in our packet and what staff sent around a week ago or whenever, it's not the same. Is it?
No changes were made in the document on the history section because I know that things were still being discussed about it.
Ah, okay, okay.
And we attached the, the materials that Angel sent, ended up being edited a couple of times. I think Leila took a cut, Mary took a cut, Denny took a cut, Justin took a cut. And the, and the result, the result of that is in the attachment. And then Mary had sent out an earlier version of that that had, had gone to all the counselors by email and so that.
That's what I've been working from. So that is not the same, I was assuming that was the same was in the attachment. It's not?
It is not, well, it all started with Angel's version and then the, the one that, the second version there, it's the two point O version. And then finally there was a, um, the first version in the attachment. Maybe I could have been more clear in my quick description of what that was.
I'm sorry, so is the most recent version attachment six in our July twenty-first packet?
And there's two, yeah, and there's two versions there. One is the version that you guys got in the, in the email and then the other version, the first one, is the one that got massaged by Denny and, and Justin.
Okay, so it's the July seventeen version that is the most recent that we should be discussing.
Yeah.
And that's on page RS five zero five.
Yeah.
And that, um, and what didn't happen to that was my, after reading the New York Times opinion piece, I didn't get back into it to capitalize black, which I had meant to do before I put it in.
And I, yeah, and I sent you all, um, you know, some, some information about capitalizing black and white and that there being, you know, more and more styles that, that adopt that approach for the specific reason that, um, obviously no one has white skin or black skin. It is a social construct and capitalizing it, um, you know, demands that we actually pay attention to, um, to, to our whiteness and the benefits that that bestows upon us.
Right, and it equalizes us. We're, we're not the standard and everything else is, has to be named.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And are you also suggesting that we use black and not African American?
I am.
General rule?
I am. There, I think that the, 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 obviously there is not one hundred percent adoption, right? I mean, there are, there are going, there are people who argue, but, but the, what, where I have landed on my own writing and even in my own speech is informed by the, you know, the communities of color that I engage with on a regular basis and, you know, it, it, using the word, using the term black with a capital B, um, really calls attention to the shared experience, no matter where you might hail from. So, um, you know, it doesn't matter if you are of, you know, direct African ancestry or you, you know, are, are the descendant of enslaved black Americans or, you know, there are, or, or, or people who, you know, identify as black who have no African, not, don't necessarily have African, known African ancestry at all. Um, in our culture, we, we, you know, we tend to treat people the same and they have a shared experience. And so that's, that, that to me is, is a very compelling case.
And I also think that in just, the place where I see this come up the most in here is, is talking about the exclusion laws and, and I'm pretty sure that they would have also expressly forbidden any one of African descent from owning or being here in any way, shape or form. Um, I did want to ask a question about the final sentence in that first paragraph on five oh six. Uh, this further enabled the exclusion and segregation of black and brown people in the state and in Milwaukee. So part of my understanding of why we capitalize black is that we're, we're referring to a cultural group, um, and. cultural group and everything that you also just said. But I, I have come to understand that using the term brown people may feel, may still feel derogatory.
Absolutely, it can. And it's, it's, it, but it is it by everyone. You know, many people of color, you know, many people identify as, you know, black and dark or brown folks. But I think that this can actually be addressed by, by actually changing that entire thing to BIPOC. And, and just, I, I think this further enabled exclusion and segregation of, of our black indigenous communities of color.
Yeah, that works. What are you talking about specifically?
Yeah, page 50, RS 506. It's the, talking about the exclude, the black exclusion laws. The last sentence, this further enabled the exclusion and segregation. And I would just change out the, that, the black and brown people in the state of Milwaukee. I would just change that to BIPOC.
I mean, I, I kind of hate to introduce the abbreviation BIPOC because I don't know that I think it's going to necessarily last.
Well, we spell it out. We would have to spell, it would not be just using the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was only abbreviating for speech, not.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Um, okay. I have a much bigger problem with this whole section. I, and that's why I sent around the, I thought the suggestions that the council president made to the original section made sense in creating some balance. And I was all for adding them to, you know, I mean, at least generally, adding them to what we had. I feel like this rewrite has completely gone the other way. It's become all about sort of the bad things or the negative things and it's, and it's eclipsed any sort of normal Milwaukee history. It's also including a lot of federal things that were not specific to Milwaukee. Things that are missing from here, like it says, it doesn't mention that the trolley came in 1892 and that that led to growth. It kind of jumps from the 1850s to the 1950s in a lot of ways. It doesn't mention, you know, it mentions the trolley went away. It didn't mention that the trolley came and that that spurred growth. It mentioned, it doesn't mention incorporation at all. I mean, it's, it seems to me it's, I, I just find it really problematic. I think the better course was to keep what we had originally, add the changes that the council president suggested and not some of this stuff like the spare housing chapter. I mean, the Spare Housing Act paragraph has some logical lapses in it. I just, yeah, I just find it very problematic. But if we're going to go with this, if I'm the only one who feels that way, I absolutely feel like this needs to go back out for public comment because this is, there is almost not a single word carried over from what was out there for public comment. So that's kind of my feeling about the thing. And it went from being Milwaukee history to Milwaukee land use history. And I don't know if even, I think that's right. I mean, this is, I mean, you know, we can't cover all of Milwaukee history, but, you know, this, this document is about more than land use. Certainly like not even mentioning incorporation or, you know, yeah.
I really appreciate all the additional context. And I do think there's, you know, a lot of relevant information, even when we include, you know, federal activities. You know, Milwaukee isn't somehow immune or, you know, different than every other community that, that was, you know, impacted by these laws. And, and it has a direct, you know, the impact is, I mean, it, the impact is the same, right? I mean, it's, it's not, it's how we got here, right? So I really appreciate the additional context. I also appreciate that we can't, you know, which is, which is where we started with this conversation, right? That it needed more balance, but it wasn't, you know, there isn't, there, there, each, each one of these paragraphs, you know, is probably three books on the shelf behind me, you know? So there's so much that could be said, you know, for, you know, for all of these pivotal moments in Milwaukee's history and how, and how they helped define, you know, what Milwaukee looks like today. So I, I think I could, I could go sort of, I think I could go and revert back to something, you know, more slend down, you know, more in line with, with what I had originally proposed. But I, but I also really appreciate, you know, the, the time and don't necessarily want to just dismiss all the work that was done by staff to incorporate all these other really important events. I mean, you know, the, the highway system is another, you know, example of, you know, how cities got shaped, including.
Well, and in fact, railroad doesn't appear at all in here. Railroads should be in here. Rail, yeah, railroads and highways should be in here.
And, and the trolley going in, the trolley line, yeah. I, I think, whether, I don't know whether I think that this needs to be trimmed down, but I do think some of the positive aspects, if you will, our history need to be reinserted.
I'm, I'm not worried about length. I'm more worried about inclusivity to the extent that we can. And I know that we don't have the staff time to do research and really nail down a lot of details about the history that, that is, that, that was never written and is about our, our non-white residents. So I'm, I'm totally fine with putting back in some language about incorporation and a little more about some of the particulars of pioneer history. But I, I actually don't want to undo what staff added because I think that the, one of the things that became troubling to me the more I read this section and thought about it, and I get it. I mean, local history is, is so important to identity. And so when you're thinking about telling the story of a place, it's, it totally makes sense that you, you get hooked into the characters that we all know and love and, and tell the story from a perspective that relates to that human scale. But when we do that, we lose sight of all of the other people who, who weren't as well documented. And, and I feel like adding in to this context of what was going on at the federal and state levels really helps invite more people in to, to the picture, you know? And, and all of those things tremendously shaped where we are today. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here without them. We still struggle with some of their effects and we still benefit from some of their effects.
Yeah, I, I was just, it just occurred to me that, you know, a big part of what Milwaukee was at one point was Italian truck farms and a fair amount of Japanese farms as well. And none of that, I mean, you don't get the sense of that this was an agricultural predominantly. I mean, all the areas outside of downtown were, were agricultural for, for a very long time. So, yeah, and I think there's some opportunities maybe to.
Yeah, I think that's an important part too. I mean, you know, we, you know, this is, you know, a lot of the policies, a lot of what our work is about housing, but this is almost become exclusively about housing. And so I do think it needs to be a little broader. I also think there's, you know, not, I mean, there's a little bit about commercial areas, but it seems like it's, you know, that also maybe gets short shrift about, you know, industrial.
Right, yeah.
Employment areas.
Lisa, your original thought was to, was that the work that Council President Faulkner did should just be inserted into the, the history section that was in the original draft?
That's what I was expecting. I thought that was the proposal and that was what I was expecting to see. And I was quite taken aback when I saw the extent of the rewrite, yeah.
I hadn't looked back at the original until right now. Quite a bit, there were things.
There's almost nothing from the original in here. You guys added back in some sentences of, you know, what's in, well, I'm looking at the version I printed, which is the, I guess, July 9th version, where I have highlight, yellow highlights where you added back in. Like, because the origin, the one you first sent out had nobody by name except Oppe. You'd taken out Lot Whitcomb, you'd taken out Llewellyn, you'd taken out everybody. The only person named by name was Oppe. So you've added back in some of those other names, but otherwise it's, yeah, it's very little of what was in that, yeah. And I do, again, I think there's a big gap. It kind of goes from 1850s and, and, you know, and the Chinese Exclusion Act to 1950s and cars and, 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 you know, and restrictive zoning and stuff. And there's sort of, you know, yes, I mean, there is, yeah.
Counselor Beatty, it sounds like you, I guess I have a couple of questions for Council. The first one is, it sounds like we have a couple of versions, that if we pulled some of the pieces from a previous version around our industrial ways or maybe our farming history, some of those pieces and put them into this, it may be more what you're looking for. Is there a way for us to merge some of those pieces? Because I also heard that there was less interest, there, there is less concern about the length of the section. So if, if it's really as easy as just compiling these things together, would that help us get further?
Works for me.
Or are there actually things you want excluded? Because I'm just trying to make sure that staff knows where you want us to land. We can go back and try and do that. Or if you want to try and, if there's a section that doesn't exist around farming or some of these other pieces, then we may ask for some additional guidance from you about what those might be. And then we could have this on the August meeting.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, with add, with compiling.
Okay.
And then, you know, and then each of us really reading through this very carefully and, and, and looking for specific tweaks we need to make to be able to, to move forward, you know? And I don't know that I want to add, you know, too much, but, you know, there is one place where I feel like, where did I put it? The very last, so RS 505, I think we should insert at the end of the last paragraph, "Oppe never returned to Milwaukee," period. The last Chinese exclusion law was not repealed until 1943. I think that's, there are, that, I mean, there are bridges we can make in sort of the timeline and I think that's one of them.
Well, and I think if there's generally an agreement, the contents here, it's just now separated. If there's a way that, I, I think that's much easier for staff than trying to recreate specifics. So if you have specifics that are excluded, we just need to know what they are. But otherwise, I'm, I'm very confident in Denny and Mary's ability to actually, yes, I am, Denny, I promise, to be able to take these two documents and merge them with a little bit more of an, of a, an equal weighting between them. So just bringing things in, we wouldn't exclude things. It'll make, it'll add some pages.
Yeah, and then finessing, you know, and then each of us just really going through, you know, with a fine tooth comb and, and finessing the language to make sure that we can, you know, that things aren't overstated or understated or, you know.
Yeah. And I do think, I mean, there's a reference to McLaughlin being built and there's later a reference to 224 kind of in passing. But I do think pulling those two together and the railroads, just as we were talking about, and talking about barriers that split the city, because that is something that, you know.
Yeah.
Bless his, bless him's, rest him, may he rest in peace. Brought up all the time.
And if anybody wants some further reading, Google just how terrible McLaughlin was.
Maybe we have a renaming in order.
Yeah.
We can talk about what that. I also, I, I appreciate that. Does this generally give us a path forward tonight about what we can bring back to you? If there's something else that you realize, oh, I forgot to say, I really want this piece of history, at least something documenting it, just let us know. We can put in a sentence or two or we can try. It's not going to be perfect. We'll send it back out to you and get additional thoughts at the next meeting. Does that work?
Sure. And I would note, just a minor thing, but there's a reference to large annexations added to the city's growth in the 1960s and our map tells us that's not the case. So that's one thing that needs a tweak.
I noticed that.
Well, our map starts, it does start at 1960, doesn't it? Yeah, okay. Lisa, one question I have for you is if we reach out to Greg Heemer and others that contributed in the first version.
Yeah, I guess that's the big question is do we need to put this out there for public comment again?
Yeah.
Well, I also, there's an option of that. You all have given us enough feedback that we have versions that we could consolidate and post if you wanted only that section to be open for public comment. If you're okay with us going straight to the history, well, I'll leave it at that. You tell us how you would like to handle it.
Yeah. So the first version that staff presented, so Counselor Beatty, is your concern that there, the difference between the July 17th and the July 9th is so different that you don't?
No, the difference between the version the public commented on and either July 9th or July 17th.
So you don't think in the, in the, since Jul, yeah, okay, so.
I don't know. I haven't even read July 17th, to be perfectly honest. So I've only read July 9th.
Okay.
But the difference between what the public was given and the July 9th is almost, you know, zero words carried over.
Right, but we're talking about synthesizing the July 17th version with that version. So if all we're talking about is an expansion of the July 17th version and we feel like that information is true and accurate, then, then I guess I'm not, I don't quite see the need for public comment. I mean, I, I don't want to shut down further public comment, but, but I guess I'm not.
Well, there's a concern. I guess this was where I, I mean, I just think there's, you know, we started with like three new, three additional paragraphs that Counselor, Council President Faulkner proposed originally. And now we've got, you know, well, or whatever it is, basically new paragraphs. It's a lot of content.
Well, and I, I guess one of my questions is, Counselor Beatty, these are, so typically the, the biggest concern I would have for public comment would be for things that are policy changes. So there are things that are going to impact people in the future based on decisions you're making tonight and in the coming weeks. The history section is actually just a reporting. It's not something that necessarily changes what happens per se. I think it gives context, but it doesn't change the policies. So I guess the reason that you don't hear staff saying, yes, we need to open public comment is only because it's not a substantive change for future policy. But if you feel strongly, this is absolutely a decision for Council, it's feedback to you, that's why we're less concerned about it.
I would like to get done.
I just, I have to say that. And when I, I, I love that we're going to do a synthesis. I think that's good and, and I'm glad that. I think that's good, and I'm glad that you called out that we moved away so far from the original draft that things got left out that were important. I am trying to picture public comment that would come in, that would make me want to do a substantial revision, and I'm not, and I'm having a very hard time coming up with that.
Well, I mean, I'll just...
That they don't like, and I can come up with some wordsmithing changes that people might suggest, but the overall feel and content, I don't see us making substantial changes based on public comment. And maybe that's a failure of imagination on my part, totally possible.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, Denny recited how many people looked at this version and nobody caught that it doesn't even mention incorporation. So, I mean, I think there could be things that we, that none of us are thinking of that are important elements of Milwaukee history.
The original didn't...
Yeah, the original didn't mention incorporation.
Didn't talk about the trains, talk about the...
Right, right. Or any of these other pivotal moments in history.
I think what was done was there was less emphasis taken, taken, I mean, it was like the white pioneer description was removed and there was more put in about the story of discrimination and so on that occurred. So that was what happened there. I mean, we can go back in and try to rebalance, I guess, it's going to make it a little bit longer. But the original section was written by Greg Heemer and some of the folks associated with the museum. So, you know, I think it might be worthwhile to kind of close that loop again.
Well, and I think the gift, the gift with Planning Commissioner Heemer is that I think he's actually going to agree with some of these changes. I think that he's proven that and shown that. And I think he's really, he's been very thoughtful about that. So I think it's worth us talking to him and just making sure that generally he doesn't see anything that we're missing that's big. But I actually think Greg's probably going to be excited about this, about this general merging of these and trying to have a more complete history. I think one of the things that he's, and I'm speaking for him, and that's not fair, but I think one of the things we have struggled with is there, we're a small town and we didn't gather all the history for all the people. We should have. We need to be better about that. So it's really hard. So creating a document like this actually gives us something. It gives us something that allows us to reference who we were. And that's what Greg's all about. So I love Denny's idea of talking to him. I'm just wondering if you needed public comment if we're already going to talk to them.
I mean, the museum is the, you know, Greg and others are the ones who, you know, contributed in the first place and who's, you know...
And the largest museum dedicated to the misery of Milwaukee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Best side of the Mississippi.
I think, I mean, I'm certainly going to just plan on, you know, pinging Greg and saying, hey, you know, as soon as I get this merged version from staff, then I'm, I would love, I'm going to send it right to him and say, hey, we've made a lot of additions to your work. Thank you so much for all of your dedication. Can you take a look at this? And I know Counselor Beatty's got some great ideas about things to include to make it even stronger and bridge some of those gaps, and I think we're going to get there. And, you know, as long as nobody else is worried about the length, I'm not either.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the length.
He will be thrilled if we give more page space to Milwaukee's history. I mean, this is his dream come true.
Is anybody else experiencing audio issues? The mayor's reporting that he is experiencing audio issues.
I only heard a couple times when Counselor Heisey's mic seemed to amplify, but just really briefly.
Sorry about that.
No, I don't think it's...
I don't think it was you.
Well, and I'm wondering, you got very, very, very quiet, Angel.
Oh, maybe, I wonder if my mic just slipped behind my collar or something.
That's why I was wondering if it was just me or if that was happening for everyone.
I didn't notice losing Angel's audio.
So I'm really sorry. I want to pull us back to the question, which is just, do we feel like we're at a point where we need to put this up for public comment? Or do we feel like, based on what we've talked about, we can, we can have it reviewed with the Historic Museum and call it?
I'm okay with that.
Me, too.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Wrote it in the first place, so...
Thank you.
All righty. Anything else?
On the history or on anything?
Oh, I don't think that was our last thing.
That might be our last thing.
Last one I got.
Oh, did, actually, throughout capitalizing black and white, did everyone have a chance to read the standard? You know, it seemed like there are a lot of, you know, really reliable institutions using that. I have adopted that in my own writing. So, but there is definitely a school of thought that, you know, only blacks should be capitalized and whites should continue to, but I, you've got the quote that I sort of thought was the most relevant to that conversation. I've adopted my own, you know, thinking around the idea that whiteness does need to be called out. We don't get a pass, so there's my case.
We treat it as a culture. We capitalize Chinese culture, we capitalize black culture, we capitalize white culture.
So what do we assume white means? Just fair-skinned people? I know an Iranian that's fair-skinned.
You're absolutely right. And how that person is perceived and treated in our country, there are certain benefits and privileges bestowed upon him and me, you know, because of his whiteness. Doesn't mean that he's of European descent, but I think that there's an unfortunate sort of privilege, I mean, that's just what it is, you know, that is bestowed upon people who are perceived to be what we have created as a white race in this Western culture. That doesn't mean that he doesn't experience racism in this culture as well, you know, for, you know, other aspects of who he is, but...
Yeah, white just seems like such a generic term. I mean, it is, obviously.
Yeah, because, yeah, yeah, it is.
I also think that we're in a moment in time where history is shifting pretty quickly. And I think it's actually an amazing moment to capture what is today. And so I think that what Counselor Faulkner is recommending actually captures today, where we're at. And it's not something that you would need to edit at the future as it changes unless it became a statement that was seen as derogatory towards people of color. So for right now, I don't see any harm, and I actually see some benefit of taking this moment and capturing where we are today as a historic document in and of itself. So I kind of like it. We're going to, we've talked about hiring somebody who's an equity manager in the coming months. I think that that person in the future will be involved in discussions around this. For Council, they won't be here before we adopt the plan, so...
I think we might also add a call out, a footnote, to address the adoption of the writing style.
Oh, yeah. I think...
Really good idea.
We should absolutely do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you're comfortable with that, then that's how staff will go through. We'll do a word search. If you see anything at the August 4th that you want to correct or change, we'll do that. But we can work on doing a footnote that just notes this moment in time, and we'll go forward. Does that work?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So I will want a printed copy as soon as the new, next version, the final version for the, is ready, so just let me know when to come.
Yeah, me, too.
Call one, pick up my printed copy.
I would also appreciate having, it's so much easier to work off of that.
It's either that or I have a third monitor.
That's all right. I did have one other question, which was back, Stefan testified about deed restrictions on density. Did we ever learn any more about those? Do we have any examples of those? I knew it was probably a fool's errand to expect to know how many there are, but do we...
I don't know, but I would expect where they are likely to exist are in planned developments and those types of projects.
Well, I think he said his house has one. I'll ask him to, I'll ask him to see his, I guess, but...
I mean, we don't usually see the deeds when we're doing our work. We have no awareness of that.
Right, right. I was wondering if the, that would be anything that the tax assessor would be able to tell us, but I'm sure that's not like a statistic they track or whatever.
It'd be a great job for some intern to research different deeds from different developments and see what shows up, but it's something we've got the ability to do right now.
Yeah, I think it would be a trip to the county and sifting through very old microfiche because it hasn't all been digitized. And it, well, I think most of it has, but it's very, it's kind of difficult to find because you can't look it up like just by street address or, you know.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Is that the last of the comments then for the evening on this? Can I just take one moment then? Thank you to the incredible staff that have worked tirelessly, painfully, continuously to make this document real. And thank you to all the community members who gave literally years of their lives to make this happen. Thank you to the Council, to the Planning Commission, to the NDAs who were involved in making this a truly remarkable document. I am thrilled to be here tonight, but I am also just in awe of how much it took to get here tonight. So congratulations to everyone.
Yes, and that list, we definitely need to thank the CPAC members, too.
Absolutely.
Two years of lots of meetings. And David Levitan, who's not with us anymore.
And the CPIC members who will keep on...
Will carry it on.
We'll be thanking them in the future, yeah.
We'll start him off by her up.
Yeah. Well, thank you all. I mean, I am really, I'm really proud of this Council, and I think that we did a damn good job listening to each other and working together and coming out with something that, you know, just based on what I think I'm hearing, we're all going to pass. You know, I think that that, we've tackled a lot of really big stuff and, you know, we've ventured into places that the previous complan, you know, didn't, didn't. And I think that this really sets us up for a dynamic and robust conversation going forward, and I'm really super excited to be, to be doing it with all of you. Yeah.
Ditto.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good. There's a light at the end of the tunnel, and it looks like we'll get there, so it's excellent.
Actually, technically, I'm not sure there is because we're about to walk into four years to, or six or eight years of work.
Why? Well, that's just a different tunnel.
This channel, this chapter, awesome. And it really is an incredible document.
You're sounding like Kelly. We, remember, we're supposed to like have ribbon cuttings every once in a while to remind ourselves that we actually accomplished something.
Hey, I say congratulations first before I killed all your happy statements. And, oh, and she cut something for us. Look at that.
Well, we're not there yet. We haven't...
No, and I do think that we need to do something at the next one. So we should talk about this when we actually adopt. But I think marking these moments are critical. I think that you're right, this has been, this is a huge lift that you all executed on.
I'm waiting until the actual vote.
I think we're going to back out on you, Denny.
Tack another year on Tiara.
I am a perfectionist in many ways, but I think that we have invested enough time and thought and care and intellect in making this a very, very good document, and it is time for us to bless it and move on to the action phase.
And come back to it if we need to. I mean, you know, we know we're going to do that, so...
Yeah, it's written in there.
Right.
We give them the...
Right.
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn, Mayor?
First, I need to...
Continue?
To continue.
All right. It was off script.
Until August 4th.
I move to continue the hearing on the updated comprehensive plan to a date certain of August 4th, 2020.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue this hearing until a date certain of August 4th, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. The hearing will be continued on August 4th. So now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will do.
Not that late, it's not my time to do it.
It's only 8:30.
I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Has been seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.